17:20, 25:30 PM in council chambers. Notice of this meeting was given to the township clerk, composed on township bulletin board and township website calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle on the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of the United States of America.
And you please be seated. The next planning board regular meeting will be held on October 22nd at 6:30 PM in council chambers. Roll call please, Yamalat.
Mr. Oppert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza? Ms. Caffrey? Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Wox?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah? Mayor McCartney? Mr. Wayneo?
Present.
Chairman Bago?
Here.
Okay, I make a motion that the planning board move into executive session.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Ladies and gentlemen, the planning board will move into executive session. Please do not leave the room. We should be back shortly. Thank you. I make a motion we reengage the planning board, open up the meeting.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Back on the record, welcome to the people on Zoom and the people in the room. I make a motion, we reengage the planning board, open up the meeting again. Who have a second?
So move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Planning board is now returned from executive session. One of the issues that the planning board has dealt with, we were asked by one of the council people to have not only a transcript of our meeting minutes and minutes, but a video of the meeting minutes also posted on the website. We've had a discussion, I'm going to go around the board and I will ask for your vote and any comment you wish to have on that. And that will be our policy going forward. So I'm going to start off with Mayor McCartney. So the motion is, motion is to have a video link for all of our meeting going forward, every meeting going forward. And a yes vote would be yes, we'll do it. And a no vote would be no, we won't do it.
I'm going to say yes.
One yes?
One yes.
Mr. Klein.
So I was at a, I missed a few meetings and I had to review the audio video. I want to say I don't see much of a benefit of the video part of it. When I had to look at an exhibit, it was too hard to see from that camera from that size. So I had to look it up at the PDF on the website. So I don't think it's necessary to have the video. So I'll vote no.
Okay. Ms. Caffrall?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chairman Garino?
I understand when we look at our documentation, we need to roll our minutes and try to understand it in the same way as when it goes to legal experts. They don't look at a video. They actually look at the actual documentation and what has been said. So, I mean, it's additional work, it's additional, but I don't see any development or any change or anything. So I vote no.
Mr. Alper?
You know, we were on screen for school board, councils on screen. I, when I miss a meeting and have to catch up, I think for me at least, I do prefer to watch it on video, even if I do, I acknowledge it is hard to still see the exhibits and you have to open them separately if you need to look at them. I don't see a reason not to, and it seems like it's, you know, convenient for the public. So yes.
Okay. Mr. Wilks?
I'm kind of going back and forth with it to fully understand the reason, but like you said, you have to have a camera following us around to get all the exhibits in. I just don't see it necessarily. I'm voting no.
Okay. Councilperson Scarpa?
Yes, I've had many members of the public ask me why our meetings are not on video as the council meetings are. They have said that they feel it's a lack of transparency. They feel it's much easier to follow the meetings, review them, go back and forth and see the exhibits that are up there. So I'm a clear yes. I think it's very important that we do this.
Thank you. Mr. Cadoza?
Yes, thinking of learning styles, the different ways people absorb information, wanting to have, wanting the public to have all of the options available to them, I'm going to say yes, we should have them.
Okay.
Video.
I don't think it's necessary. I think that we have survived all this time. I think it's extra work for our staff. However, if the public feels that it's not that necessary, I will vote yes. Okay, can you tell us the ayes and the nays?
Do you want a total or do you want?
Total, just total.
Six yeses and three noes.
Okay, motion passes. So we will ask our staff to have, as of tomorrow, having our videos going forward, not in the past, but going forward on the link on our website. Thank you very much. Okay, having said that. Okay, guys, I'm going to ask you one thing. Imagine this is a courtroom. And no more clapping. Be quiet. And no more clapping and no more yelling. The goal is that we present a higher education here. We're trying to do something that is a matter of law. You wouldn't do this in a courtroom. We're not respecting the applicant and we're not respecting other folks in the room, the objectors. We're not respecting the people online. It's not a football game. The people up here spending their time to get this done. So let us keep decorum in mind when we do this. Outside, you can clap, you can yell, you can hoop, whatever you want. That's okay. But in here, please, let us try and maintain the decorum for all those who speak before us. With that, I want to thank you very much for that. Would you swear in our professionals, please, Ms. McGovern?
We have one professional here today. You swear our firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
Thank you. The application before us this evening is PB 24-01 West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Left 32, Zone IH1. On the road, the applicant is proposing to develop a 496 unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on a 120 acre property in the northwest corner of the township of West Orange. For the applicant?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Mr. Chairman, Brian Plucker from the firm of Hutch Manowitz and Plucker here on behalf of the applicant, West Essex Highlands, Inc.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Afren?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Bruce Afren for the objector, We Care, New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Plucker, I think you have the floor?
Yeah, the applicant would like to recall Mark Seal.
Mr. Seal, you realize that you're still under oath, sir?
Let me just ask in terms of timing, because we have Mr. Hudasco here for planner, as the planning expert for the objectors. Does Mr. Plucker have an idea how much time his engineer on recall will take roughly?
I don't suspect my direct of Mr. Seal to be very long. We also do have Mr. Penkey we're bringing back after Mr. Seal. And I don't expect his direct testimony to be very long either.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Plucker?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seal. And you do recognize you're still under oath from last time?
I do.
Okay. Were you able to review the testimony given by Mr. Gall from Princeton Hydro regarding the geotechnical issues he raised?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And you reviewed the reports that he submitted to the board, correct?
Correct. This July 16 letter and the August 12 letter.
Okay. And did you, in addition to the reports you previously prepared and that we've made part of the application materials, did you prepare a letter dated September 15, 2025?
Yes, we did. That was in response to the testimony and the two aforementioned Princeton letters.
And for the record, I did that, provide that to the board, and I believe it was added to the agenda prior to this meeting. Okay, Mr. Seal, can you just characterize, can you go over your response to Mr. Gall's comments and conclusions?
I can. Can we bring up on the screen the one?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have.
What are we bringing on the report or that little?
It's going to be, I think I labeled companion exhibit. And I'll describe it in a second, once it's up, so everybody could see it.
Hang on, hang on, one second. We're going to, we're going to raise our hand. I'm going to identify who you are. Mr. Afren, go right ahead, sir.
Just to be clear for the record, the, the report, the letter is what's called the companion document. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. And I was going to explain all of that.
Okay, let Mr. Plucker explain, and then you can, if you have an objection, you can. Thank you. Okay, to be sure, hang on one second. We're going to we're going to see what comes up, and we'll go from there. Mr. Plucker, is this the exhibit you're looking for?
Yes, it is. And I just want to identify it for the record, and we could, we should probably mark it. I'll explain it first. It's a two-page PDF. It has two images. Both images are embedded in Mr. Seal's September 15, 2025 report on page two out of seven. This copy has a bit of a higher resolution, so we wanted it to be legible for the board and everybody in the room. So we made it a separate exhibit, so we can mark that as the next applicant's exhibit, since it is a standalone exhibit. Although I will represent, and Mr. Seal can confirm, it's the same exhibit that is embedded in the report.
I for standalone exhibit, is that your number? Okay, so A5, what are we calling this? An embedded?
I would.
Says PB 4.4B?
Yeah, I would say higher resolution copy of the images contained on page two of Mr. Seal's September 15, 2025 report.
Mr. Afren?
I'm just, just.
You rise?
Thank you. Thank you. That, we agree that appears as page two, so that's a good way of referring to it.
We agree?
Well, it's a good way of referring to it. I'm just confirming that that's how I see it.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Plucker, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, Mr. Seal, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So after having reviewed the two letters from Princeton and the testimony, we prepared this report dated September 15, and we maintained that the, the slope is stable and that there will be no additional loading from the building on the slope. And I put these two exhibits together to help illustrate that point. And this is a cross-section of the proposed building through, you can see it in the upper right corner, there's a red section line that goes from the north end of the building to kind of the north and east. And that's this, that's represents this particular section. And what this shows is what you would expect for a typical foundation loading case where you have a basement. Now, this doesn't identify any particular isolated footings, but what it shows is that there's typically a fairly shallow foundation influence line, which we call the one-to-one influence line. So any, so basically what happens is all the load is shed within that kind of blue zone. And you can see that there's no load that is shed to the slope. There has been, from my understanding from questions and comments that have been made, there's been a concern that this building is shedding load directly onto the slope, and that's simply incorrect.
Okay, and just to confirm, the exhibit that we're looking at, and I just want to, so we do have a clear record, that this is your markup of one of the sheets of Mr. Appel's architectural submissions, correct?
That is correct. If you go to the next sheet, we can, you'll see, we'll look at the other section lines. And if you, as you look at the, in the upper right-hand corner, there's that red line that goes kind of down the middle of the building as well. And here you can see the top of the slope is that, where that approximate vertical dash line is, which is the, from what I understand, a negotiated limit for the top of the, of the, of the slope. And the building is located in this particular section further back from the slope. And the, and then we represent the one-to-one influence line. And again, you can see that there's no influence of the building loading onto the slope. In fact, the, the soil and/or rock that abuts the the right side of the, east side of that building would put a load on to the building, rather than the building putting the load on to the soil.
Will you identify this building? Identify the letter of the building?
Oh, that's building D.
Yes, sir. Okay, I explained that for the record. Thank you.
No, nothing else on here. I just, I'd also want to say further that the, as we reviewed Princeton's comments and their reports, we found that there's to be a fair amount of misalignment and inconsistency within the document. You know, more specifically, one example would be in the slope stability analysis, which was in the, that Princeton provided in their August 12 letter. Actually, they proved the exact same point that we've been making all along, is that the, the soil and the rock is, is even with lower values, that slope is still stable under the existing condition. There's no influence from the building on that slope, and therefore there's no additional instability or the, once the building is constructed. And I also noted as well that in, when Princeton had done their supplemental analysis of using our data, they increased the thickness of, of the weakest soils, which is, which is incorrect based on the data. They also, they also proved that the rock strength does not control slopes, which is also a condition or a position that we've been made made and maintained throughout this testimony and our reporting.
It's difficult to hear, if you could, I'm sorry, if you could speak a little louder, people are not having, are having trouble hearing.
Got it.
Ladies and gentlemen, in the back, if you have a problem here, and please raise your hand so we could, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, could you speak a little louder, sir?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. Thank you. All right. So as I've spoken to some of the, you know, the issues that was raised in the Princeton, in their first letter, they, they spoke about our, some of our parameters not matching the actual conditions, when in fact they do, and we provide supplemental data that we lay out in detail. In fact, our strength values are much higher than the ones that we used in our analysis, despite what was being said. That the critical surfaces, that is the lowest factors of safety on the self-stability analysis, they don't go into the rock, as was previously suggested. And that's true not only of the, of the basalt, but also of the feltville formation, which Princeton had maintained was somehow relevant to this analysis. Princeton had had made a comment that, that the geologic hazard review was dismissed, and which, of course, it wasn't. We were very clear in our, in our position on the geological hazards for this site and the rock, both the rock outcropping and the stability of the slope. They acknowledged that there was favorable jointing, which we had reported, and yet seemed to ignore it in the favorable jointing, which tends to control stability in hard rock formations such as this. So there was quite a bit of inconsistency and in misalignment, I think, between the testimony that they made and their reporting. And our, in my report, or our report, I believe, clearly demonstrates.
What does the word misalignment mean in your expertise?
So, meaning there were statements that were made that were perhaps misleading or not believed made based on the data. And, and despite their, their own analysis showing that the, the site or the, the slope is stable, they maintain the position that it is not or may not be, despite their own analysis showing that it is.
Okay, I have nothing further from Mr. Seal. I just wanted to confirm that all of the conclusions and testimony you provided tonight are contained within your September 15 report.
Correct, it's all in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go through the council, planning board. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Seal, when we were listening to the testimony, I, from Mr. Gall.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Get the microphone, please.
Speak louder.
Again, so there's a lot of this spelling of terms and just incorrect term speed that don't translate with the ASMRs or the
Also, people on the right side can't actually see all of the screen because it's angled at a certain way. So if, Mayor, if you could speak up, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Seal, my question was that over the summer, when we were listening to this testimony, there was testimony on blasting. So can you address that if this is slope stability? If there are?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, and it's also contained in our report. And the way we, so first of all, Langen has never recommended that blasting.
Thank you.
Langen has not recommended that blasting be done. Blasting is one method of excavation. There are many other methods of excavation. There are mechanical means, such as excavators fitted with rock ripping teeth, dozers with shanks, splitters, ho rams. There's the use of chemical expanders that are, you drill holes into the rock, put quicklime and some other fillers into it, and it basically cracks the rock and breaks it. There is controlled blasting, which limits charge per delay, the amount of charge, the, it provides precise sequencing of blasting and spacing patterns for the holes. And all these methods are used to, 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 not just to sequence the blasting in the, but also to minimize the rock overbreak and any impacts to the rock beyond the blast zone. So these are all different types of methods that are available. And in our report, we outline some of the values that we, that, that are available using different contexts, though GSI values, for example, up to certain values are typically found to be associated with conventional excavation versus GSI values over a certain amount, might typically be maybe chemical expanders and/or blasting. And, you know, below a certain value might simply just be conventional or some combination of conventional excavation. So I address all that. And one of the key.
Could you speak up over, please?
One of the key things in that case was Princeton Hydro had, had suggested that the, that the rock is poor, which it's not. And they gave a GSI value of 20, which their self-stability analysis clearly shows. doesn't impact the stability. But if the GSI, using a GSI value of twenty, if the rock will use that bad, no one's blasting anyway. So I think what has, what I know what has to happen here is that once the, once a contractor is brought on board, they're going to evaluate the data and they're going to develop their own excavation plan for this project. It may or may not include blasting. I simply don't know.
Yeah, I was concluding, so I mean, I'll put the last statement just in case.
Go right ahead, Mr. Seal. Sorry for interruption.
No, that's okay. So saying was the, using a GSI value of twenty, which is what Princeton was suggesting, in that case, the rock would not need to be blasted. It would simply be excavated using conventional methods.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, do you have any questions from Mr. Seal's testimony?
In the upper right-hand corner of Exhibit A five, page two. It seems like if you moved it down a little bit to the bend in the building, it might be a little bit closer. The building itself would be closer to the top of slope. Does that, if you were to move it down and do a cross section like you did in the left, where it's closer, would that change your conclusions about the, to the foundation?
Yeah, I understand your question. So first of all, that headline was drawn. It was part of the, the exhibit, the architectural exhibit. So I just utilized it. But, but to answer your question, if we brought it down to where the, where the building is closer, you would simply slide the building closer towards the slope, but it would, the building would still be behind the dashed vertical black line, and there would be no influence on the slope from that building.
Where would the blue trapezoid have to be in order for it to influence the slope?
The slope.
Give me an idea.
The first tree?
Yeah. Okay. So the building would have to be located between the dashed line and the first tree.
Correct. And the building is clearly in, in every instance, behind or to the, to the left of the black dashed line by varying amounts. I think as little as seven feet and as much as thirty or, or so. Thank you.
Ms. Capford, do you have any questions from Mr. Seal's testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Yeah, I had that, the same question as, as Mr. Klein did. I was curious about the, the foundation influence and how, you know, proximity to the ridge and wondering if the, the cross sections that you chose were the ones that were closest to that ridge line. My other question was in regards to the sanitary sewer. I, I think there was a comment in Mr. Gall's letter and that he testified as well to, you know, concern about the existing sanitary sewer being at the toe of slope and you know, being a bit unsure as to what the backfill would have been, you know, that at the time when they were backfilling there that, you know, they, they didn't know that a a housing development might go in later at the top of the slope. So just wondering if you have any comments on that?
We did. We, our, our initial analysis of that condition was that it's, it's not in place, similar to the rock itself. When you look at our slope stability output files, you'll see these semi-circular arcs. Those represent the lowest factors of safety that are calculated when you're doing the analysis. They simply don't go into rock and they don't come even close to the, to the sewer. So in other words, they don't, the sewer is not in, under influence of the, of the slope.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chairman Greedy, do you have any questions from Mr. Seal's testimony?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Do you have any questions from Mr. Seal's testimony?
I do. Thank you. Can we go to page one of the document? So where it shows that that's a, that the foundation stress area is forty feet deep? Or it extends forty feet?
That, that's arbitrary, that that, that would represent, for example, if there was, if there was a strip footing that was four feet wide at ten times that depth, the stress is about six percent. So in other words, if it was, if you, if you put three thousand pounds per square foot on a strip footing, you'd have six percent of that reaching as deep as about forty feet below ground, which is less than a person standing.
If it goes, if it goes deeper, for whatever reason, is there any point where the right side of the trapezoid extends down into the slope? Like if it were sixty or eighty feet?
No, that, that, that influence line is the outside limit of the influence from a, from a footing.
Okay, it wouldn't. On down infinitely if it.
It would actually start to probably curl, it would curl back.
Okay. That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkes. Do you have any questions from Mr. Seal's testimony?
Um, no, no questions at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Councilperson, Scarp, do you have any questions from Mr. Seal's testimony?
Just quickly, you made a broad statement about inconsistencies and misalignments of Princeton Hydro's report.
Excuse me, speaking of Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There were a couple, you made a broad statement about inconsistencies and misalignments. Could you be a little bit more specific? All I heard was that, in your opinion, the slope is stable, but are there other concerns you have?
I don't have any concerns about our analysis. I was simply making a statement that there was that there was the way that Princeton had approached their analysis of the data they made. They, for example, in one cross section, they, they created a, a very thick section of weak soil, which simply doesn't exist in our data. So it was a misrepresentation of, of the data, number one, but also it was misaligned with the fact that they're saying that our values were much low and we've, we shouldn't have had to explain this to them, but they, but we did in our subsequent letter. We showed them that our, the values that we had, that we could have used were much, much higher than the ones we actually used.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Codoja, do you have any questions for Mr. Seal's testimony?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
So let me just ask you this, Mr. Seal. Did Princeton Hydro find any mistakes in your calculations that you would have to go back and make changes to? No. Anything as far as assumptions go, conservative versus liberal versus anything like that, where you would have to go back and make some recalculations?
No, we, we maintain that our analysis is correct. And Princeton's their second, or their, their second letter, dated August twelfth, provides us a and an analysis that shows that our, our analysis of it, the slope being stable, is correct. But despite that, they maintain other concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions for Mr. Seal's testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of quick questions. So after reviewing the additional information within Princeton Hydro's reports, would you recommend any improvements to the slope? Do you see any needs to provide any improvements on this slope to ensure stability?
No, the slope is currently stable. There's no loading to the slope from the building. There's no need for a stabilization of any sort.
Okay. So to piggyback off that, would you recommend, or do you see a need for any additional soil testing analysis that would change any of your recommendations or opinions in your report?
No.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask, Mr. Ephron, do you have any questions, sir?
Not at this time. We, of course, would wait for the Board's engineers' report on similar subjects. And we may come back then with some response from Mr. Gall at that time. I would note one evidentiary issue. I have no objection to the two slides on the screen coming in as an exhibit, but much of the report contains material that wasn't gone into in Mr. Seal's testimony just now. So I don't think the report itself is evidence, except to the extent it refers to things he testified to. So if the report is proposed as an exhibit, I would say that only those parts are deemed evidence that refer to, relate to what was testified to. Not all of what's in the report is the subject of Mr. Seal's testimony.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Block.
There have been many reports served by the objector group, many reports by us. We are not bound by the rules of evidence as if we were in a superior court case. We have no problem with the board reviewing every single word that the objectors' reports state. And unless you would like him and waste more time to read every single word of his letter, which he is very capable of doing, I would ask that Mr. Ephron just agree that the reports become part of the record on both sides.
I, I've stated my objection, and obviously it's the chair's discretion.
Can we objection? One moment. I don't know. Well, I don't know. Okay. Go ahead.
As you noted, the rules of evidence aren't, the technical rules of evidence, I forget which one you said it, don't apply to planning board. There's some leeway here. Mr. Seal, do you, do you adopt your report as if you were to testify regarding every word in that report? Is that your?
I'm not citing, giving the essence of.
Understood. Did you prepare the report?
Yes, I did.
And you reviewed it?
I did.
And you stand by it as truthful?
Correct.
Based on your license in the state of New Jersey.
Correct.
Okay, I, I don't think that there's anything stopping the board from accepting the report.
The board's discretion is its own. I simply say.
Unless any members of the board have an objection, I recommend we adopt this report and it's open to the public. It'll be posted on the website.
When you say adopt, you mean admit it into evidence?
Admit it into evidence. Okay, now, do any members of the public have any question for Mr. Seal specifically on the information that he proffered this evening? Okay, we're going to focus on what he proffered this evening. You may ask questions. You have three minutes. Go right ahead. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Deborah Butensky.
Ma'am, could you pull the microphone close?
Deborah Butensky, the Grand West Orange. So my question is.
Ma'am. Thank you.
My question is, how are you recommending that the developer excavate to get his footings?
I'm going to object. I think his testimony was clear that Mr. Seal or his, or his firm make that determination. It is determined by the contractor in the field and as we've represented before, in accordance with all state and local regulations.
Well, the question is relevant because he said that you don't necessarily have to use blasting to get the footings forty feet down.
I didn't say that, anything about the depth.
Well, you said that in order to get the, on your, can you go back to the other slide? You, you were talking about going down forty feet.
No, I wasn't talking about going down forty feet. The forty foot was just it was a demarcation of, a random depth of the stress that the rock would feel from a footing.
Explain it.
The real question is, when you guys have to put in
the underground parking, the subterranean parking, and that's distant to where you showed it, it's, it's closer to the southern part of Building D. How is that going to affect, because you've got a hundred and twenty-five units or so in that building and you're proposing parking? How does that destabilize or not according to your testimony?
The cross section was developed by the architect, not by my firm. We just simply used it for illustration purposes. I didn't, why didn't? It is where it is.
No, but the relevance is that you're going deep down.
You're going, your gun was deep as twenty.
That's what I'm trying to understand. How does that not destabilize the slope? You're digging into the rock to get.
You're digging into the rock directly below the building. The slope is forty to sixty feet away.
At some point, it's only seven feet away.
No, it's not.
Can you show it again?
You can bring up the diagram.
Yeah, the distance of seven feet is the peak of the ridge line. It's that vertical dashed black line. That is not the, that is not the, the slope.
Ma'am, do you have to question again, please?
So the question is, can you demarcate on Building D? You're seven feet from the ridge line. How far up into the building, from the south to the north, does the parking extend? Does the subterranean parking? So you have to excavate out to get there. I'm not understanding.
Well, I think the excavation, I think, as I understand it, there's, there's a basement below the entire building and there's a two, two depths of excavation, of, of basement, I think, over in this area. And the rock is basically in this section here. And the, the proximity of seventy, seven feet between the building and this line, I think occurs somewhere up in here.
So where is the parking?
What I understand is under this, mostly under this area.
That's what I'm trying to understand. Where is the parking going to be?
I don't know. I think it's under the entire building.
So at one point, you are seven feet from the slope. You have no excavate.
There's seven feet from this line, which is, and this is not representative of that location. Maybe if you can go to the next slide, please? I think it's more representative of this, where you're closer to seven feet from, if this building translated forward, you'd be seven feet back in here. So you're flat, you're flat up in this area. The building is seven feet behind it. You're still back off the slope and you're not excavating into the slope. You're excavating vertically.
You were excavating as close to seven feet from the slope.
No, we're not, they, they are not going to be excavating as close as seven feet from the slope. They're excavating seven feet from this line. That is not, the, the slope is down over here. This is the slope.
Up to the line. I mean, I.
This is flat right here. The ground is flat right here. Can you see the section? So you're excavating seven feet over on this side, and you're going straight down. So you're not touching the slope.
You're, you're at the top, you're at the top, the summit of the slope. I mean, we're, we're parsing things, but the point is it's very close, seven feet, and you have disrupted all this, all this fill, all this rock, bedrock to get the parking. You're telling me that's not going to destabilize the slope? That's what you've testified.
That is exactly what I've testified to.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead. One second. Mr. Klein, go right ahead.
Mr. Seal, the, you go.
You don't mind. I'm sorry. I, I get more than three minutes. I'm sorry.
The deeper you go, where you go basement and parking garage, that blue trapezoid is going to go deeper.
Yeah, you can barely see it, but there's a line under here, which is the, the lowest basement. So this trapezoid would start lower now.
Correct.
You see, you're further from the slope.
And if you were to take that whole trapezoid and building and slide it over until it's seven feet from the dashed line.
Correct.
You're going to be deeper and you're still not going to be.
You're still never going to intersect the slope.
Where would it have to be to affect the slope? You said, down by the trees.
On the slope. Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Plucker.
Yeah, and just for the record, has been established and is set forth in the zoning ordinance, the peak of the ridge line dotted line that Mr. Seal is referring to is not a setback. It was a line that was agreed to as part of this ordinance in connection with the settlement, and there could be no development that occurred to the east of it.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clear, make that clear for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plucker. Mr. Ephron, you rise?
Yes, of course, but the question factually would be, where is the ridge line? We can have a settlement or ordinance that says there shall be no development east of it. The question is frequently raised, where exactly is that? I just want to note that there's a difference between the factual location of the ridge line and the fact that we set up a rule, no development east of it. So the statement in the ordinance and the settlement doesn't actually tell us geographically where the ridge line is in relation to the building. I just want to point that out. That's a separate question. And the problem has been that the schematics don't really tell us the location of the ridge line. Mr. Plucker said one version of where it is. So one of the statements he's made on the, on the client. So I just want to point out that regardless of what the ordinance says about where you build in relation to the ridge line, there's a factual issue as to where the ridge line is, which is not, I just wanted to make that point. Because Mr. Plucker's statement makes it suggest like, we know where that is because of the ordinance. We don't.
The question is, do you know where the ridge line is based on geography, not because of the ordinance, correct?
Correct. And I just want to make the point that the ordinance is not telling us where the ridge line is in relation to the building.
I think the board understands that and will ask the applicant to eventually proffer exactly where the, where the bridge line is based on geography.
If we need to do that, yes. I just wanted to point out.
I think it has been done already.
I, I think it has. And just to be clear, the language of the ordinance is the, I believe, the peak of the ridge line. That line was, you know, on the concept plan, and Mr. Anderson, in his direct testimony, did show. did show it on his plan and showed that we were to the west of it.
Okay, so.
I'm simply pointing out that what the ordinance says in terms of where you build does not tell us where it actually is. To know that, that's not sufficient.
There's concurrent pieces of information floating in space. We're going to make everything join together eventually. I promise. Okay, good. Go right ahead.
Rachel Klein Howell Drive. That, sorry, what?
Go right ahead.
Um, can we actually put the drawing back up for a second?
Stay. Stay your name.
Rachel Klein Howell Drive.
Thank you.
Mr. Smell, did you prepare this picture? This rendering, just out of curiosity?
Now, this this document is from this firm here, which is the architect. All we did is we put on this information here just to show the proxim, just to show the the proximity of the of the the load that would be shed by the building onto the underlying soil or rock.
So the landscape in there, it rises and falls. This this isn't actually realistic to what's in there. So at points where the actual slope, there's only one part where the slope is really that high, and then for almost the entirety of its heading north, it actually goes lower and lower. See, this is right above Mayfair. I know that house. And I know how the slope goes. So when the slope drops 10 feet, seven feet, 20 feet, what's that going to change? That rendering, because the building, as you see, it's not exactly a straight line, but it's not so far off either. It's following more or less the way that the slope, the ridge does drop. But there's very, there's only one point in the entire forest where the slope rises that high, and then it just continues to drop downwards north the entire way. So that's the most southern tip of the building because that's Mayfair. And the top of the building is where Howell Drive is. So my question is, you're telling everyone that every it's all stable and fine, but that's because you're saying you're going to the top of the slope. But that's really only one small portion of this building. So knowing that now, are you still saying that everything's going to be, it's fine, it's fine, it's? That's my question. Does that change anything?
Is your question, does? Does it change any? Does what you just asked change anything?
Because the top of the slope to the building, that's all that isn't. It's unrealistic. The slope drops and drops and drops and drops towards the north. See, that's going, that's.
Down here sometimes?
And lower, but and the drop and the drop, but the drop also gets more precipitous as that happens. That looks gentle. But as you had more.
Elevation, the slope would have to be, or they, the ridge would have to be in order for this.
To be real, to be.
Ask him that.
Yes. That Mr. Klein just asked.
Okay, well, that's the best ventriloquist act I've heard this evening.
So to try to recap this, this building would have to be situated on the area of the slope. It have, it would have to basically sit out beyond it, unless this slope line here, anywhere where this slope is steeper than 45 degrees, this line could potentially intersect.
But it is steeper than 45 degrees as you had.
Ma'am, 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 you can do a lot of things. You can ask questions. You just can't testify. You can ask. Ask anything you want, but please don't testify.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Oh. Mr. Affron.
I mean, just.
Wait, 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 wait.
Has helpfully referred to the trapezoid, which is a good term.
I think Mr. Seal wanted to say something.
Yeah, I think I should.
Once, one at a time. I'm old. Please.
Let me just clarify one factual thing. I just made, Mr. Seal, is the purple trapezoid the part your firm added to this?
Yes, it is.
And the original building was on Mr. Appel schematic. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I want to clarify just one thing. I mean, there's in the last question, there was a lot of discussion about how the position of the building changes with respect to the to the to the dashed black line. And the closest it gets is seven feet, which is probably a lot closer to the turn at the southern end of the building. But as you get further to the north in general, it gets further back. So so another, yeah, I can I can use the pointer here. So, yeah, so. So although that that dashed black line, I'm sure it's shown on here, but it's somewhere falls within this area down here like this. Right? This is the high point here. You can see this topographic feature. So this would be the high point. So that dashed black line would kind of come through here, something like this if I were going to draw it. Right? So so. So so as you get farther to the north.
One at a time, Mr. Klein.
So I'm trying to clarify. So I think what Miss Miss Klein is saying is this is a high point, another high point, and then dips down. So maybe in here, and you talk about what happens in here when that, when the the slope is lower, is lowest point relative to the floor of the garage, maybe say that.
Yeah, I'd have to see. I'd have to see what the what the counters are, but if these are two-foot counters, you're dropping six feet, you're dropping 12 feet off of here. All all that happens is your basement level. Could be, yeah, but the but you're you're basically, you have a footing just a little bit below that, below the grade here. And so what if we zoom out now? Back down to this. So maybe your your slope would be somewhere like down in the ground surface would be something like this, and it would come out and then down the hill.
And that trapezoid still doesn't affect the slope?
Correct. The trapezoid is still below the slope.
Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Seal on his testimony? Come up, state your name for the record, please. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Pinulo. I live within the 200-foot notice point of the development. I have a question. I read your report. Thank you, Mr. Seal. The blasting versus no blasting, there was a extensive section in the report describing the whole situation of the different methods of excavating, et cetera. And it said there's not likely to be blasting, but when there's blasting, if there's blasting, that impacts people like me who are within earshot of the blasting. So at what point do I know is there blasting or no blasting? Because that makes a really, really big deal to people who are in proximity to that in terms of even things like stability of our own domiciles, forgetting about quality of life.
Ma'am, I think that is set by state ordinance and the applicant will have to will have to apply for a blasting license through the township. I'm going. Mr. Plucker, you want?
Yeah, and I and I think it's.
I still get to answer that question though, no?
I'm going to answer the question, Mrs. Pinulo. We have, the applicant has an affirmative obligation.
One sec. One, Mr. Plucker, one sec.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Pinulo. Thank you for your comment and question. I can confirm for the applicant that is part of the settlement, even though there were no Essex Fells residents who were party to the settlement agreement, even though Essex Fells itself was not a party to the settlement agreement. We do have an affirmative obligation in connection with working with the town and following all the regulations as we previously advised the board and the public. We do have an affirmative obligation to provide notice, whether it be on the township website, to work with the town when any and all blasting activity occurs, and we would certainly provide that courtesy to the Essex Fells residents as well.
Wait, wait. One at a time.
My my question, my question, thank you for speaking for me. My question was blasting versus not blasting, and at what point do we know whether there's, you know, controls over it or not, blasting versus no blasting? That's what I'd like to know.
I think Mr. Seal spoke to, Mr. Seal, would you explain that again, please?
Well, based on the data that's available, the contractor would develop a an excavation plan, which would identify the appropriate method for the various areas, and there may be other contributing factors. There may be yeah, other other influencers limitations in doing one over another, and I can't speak to that.
And if the blasting affects my home, what happens? Who do I go to for that?
It's not within his testimony.
That's not in his, that's true. It's not in his testimony. You can answer that if you.
Waste my time, but I do get a couple of bonus minutes or seconds because.
Bonus points. There you go. Okay.
The with respect to the discussion regarding the the ground, I'll call it, the steep slope, I understand that that's a dynamic piece of land. It's not like one day it's exactly the same as another, and in fact, over time, through erosion, that that slope actually changes. This might be similar to the question that I just asked, but in terms of your responsibility and others who have created this plan, who's responsible when the building comes down because of miscalculations in the the steep slope, the proximity to the slope, the changes in the the ground, the changes in the degree of slope? Who's responsible for that when the building falls down?
It's not within his testimony.
Let let Mr. Seal answer.
She's allowed to ask him questions about his testimony.
Right.
He did not testify as to any responsibility.
I guess.
Based on hypotheticals.
So I guess it goes to the question of who wrote the report and who's responsible for the contents of the report. You testified that you wrote the report. You also testified that you didn't do those drawings that are contained in the report, that the architect did those, and you rely upon those drawings in making some of your decisions about what you wrote in the report.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Are you asking if am I responsible? Is my firm responsible for the content?
Who is responsible for the contents? You testified that you did the report, that you didn't do the drawings based on those drawings. Some of your recommendations, some of your writing in the report were based on other people's work that was included in your report. So who is responsible for the, when the building comes down?
If you can't answer, you can't answer. Okay, I.
I can repeat it.
Go right ahead.
Dr. Bagoff, you would actually understand this because as a surgeon, if I do something and I make an error based upon somebody else's work in my work, I'm still responsible for the work that caused, say, a problem in in a procedure. So Dr. Bagoff, I think he understands that.
I'll I'll speak to that. There's a lot of variance in what you just said. So this, and you know that. So to this, there's a report that's been written and it's based on his license, and that's all any expert can do is have a report based on their license.
So that's, so I'll ask the question again. So you wrote this report and you did not write the ancillary data that formed the drawings by the architect that you used to form some of your opinions in the report, correct?
Our report stands on its own merits based on the data. The the drawing was simply an illustration to try to help folks understand that there is, that there's no load that gets shed directly onto the slope. That's all. Simple illustration.
And you wrote the entire report by yourself?
No, there's another, there's another signature on the report.
I didn't see that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I think I'm out of time. Yes. Thank you for your.
Ask another question if you.
Your indulgence.
Indulge.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Seth Weissletter, Howell Drive. Mr. Seal, quick question. Did you have the opportunity to walk the property and walk the slopes?
Yes, I have.
Okay, when when was that?
A couple of two or three occasions, you know, during and after the initial report.
Okay, so on this slope, is the soil governing the stability or is rock governing the stability of it?
The the soil, it, the soil governs the stability in this case, simply because when when you run the analysis, the 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 critical failure surfaces don't extend into the rock.
So what monitoring or instrumentation might you propose during and after construction to confirm no adverse loading occurs? Are you not recommending any or are you?
We have not recommended any at this point. No.
So would you recommend? Based on the analysis of two different highly viable firms?
Well, what what I expect will ultimately happen is during the excavation portion of the work, there'll be some form of monitoring that will be implemented. But we're not involved in that, at least not as of yet.
Right, but the monitoring came up in discussion on blasting, not on adverse load occurs with the soil governing the slope's stability. So what would be more stable, a rock governing it or soil governing?
Well, rock is generally stronger than soil.
Right.
Right? So the the limiting material is typically the the soil.
So your recommendation is not to have any monitoring with adverse load effects at this time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, the 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 execute, what we what we suggest typically is that there's a monitoring program when excavation is done, especially in especially in terms of blasting, but not necessarily for slope stability.
Right, but we, okay. If controlled blasting is ultimately required, what mitigation plan exists, if any or none, for vibration overbreak or potential slope damage? And should there be a plan in place?
Again, I believe that's outside the scope of his testimony, but Mr. Seal can go ahead and answer it if he can.
Well, he did mention there might be potential blasting. I'm not saying.
Yeah, and in the case of, correct, and in the case of blasting, we would always recommend that there be a monitoring program and that would typically involve seismographs often to to make to make certain measurements.
Right. In in your rebuttal, you kind of downplayed the utility trench effect. But did you evaluate the long-term potential for water infiltration along that trench contributing to slope instability?
We, I'd have to go back and look specifically at our our latest analysis, but we we did saturate the entire slope at one point and showed that it was still stable.
Okay. And I I guess I I tried to make hedgerick out of this. If I'm wrong, please correct me. I don't want to say I'm 100% right. But I believe that your threshold of safety factor is 1.5 and Princeton suggesting a 2.0. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so why the difference? You know, why? Why did you choose 1.5? Why are they choosing 2.0 for a safety factor? And under what regular territory or site-specific guidance is there to determine this? Because obviously that's what's skewing the numbers, correct? Or changing the number?
It's it's changing the interpretation. Typically, 1.5 for a permanent slope is it's what's used in this type of in this application. What Mr. Gall or Princeton had recommended was 2.0 based on a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Critical Structures such as dams, where there's a huge horizontal load on a structure that if it failed, would wipe out an entire community. That is not the case in this on this project.
So I guess two more questions. Your conclusions are based on a few borings and test pits and additional test pits that were done close to the homes on Howell. But how can we be confident that those samples represent the whole slope, especially since rock quality and soil strength can vary from place to place?
Both Langen and Princeton evaluated varying conditions. We used lower strength values in our soil and our decomposed rock than the data suggests. Princeton used very low soil parameters, soil and rock parameters in their analysis. They even thickened the the weakest of the sections using the very, the lowest of the strength parameters in soil, and it was still stable. So it's through that analysis that we've established that.
So I'm trying to understand here, are you saying or accusing Princeton of misrepresenting or misapplying data? Or are you basically saying that your difference is as a professional judgment rather than an outright error?
I can't speak to Princeton and how they came up with that section, but based on our review of the data, there's no section that has such a thick section or sequence of of soil.
So is it misrepresenting or misapplying data?
Well, we're not, we're not going to go there. He presented his facts. He didn't use any of those words. So let's not imply something that's not there. Okay? Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please come up, be identified, and you have three minutes. Come right ahead, sir.
Donald Ershow. I live in Roseland. E R S H O W. And I drink the water from the Essex Fells Water Company, which is affected by. which is affected by the area. I have a question regarding the blasting that you had spoken about and how, if I understand correctly, there doesn't have to be the type of, from what you would testify, there doesn't have to be the type of blasting that some people are concerned about. And you had mentioned that there could be some chemical expanders, I think you had said, and other methods. What does that mean?
So a couple of things. One is there, there's been a lot of talk about blasting and people do have, I perceive concerns about how the blasting would go, but typically blasting, in my experience, is that it's, it's not typically loud. It, it's, other than the vibration, you rarely even know that it occurs. And, and, and that perhaps speaks to the perception being, you know, what we normally see in the industry versus some exceptional case, which I understand from the public, public would be a concern. Chemical expanders are another product that's used. It's, it's, it's usually a quicklime. There's an aluminum component, iron component, silica, and it's simply, you drill a hole and you drill a hole into the rock. You put this, this material in and then it creates a, a chemical reaction that ultimately breaks the rock. And there's similarly, there's, there's, there's splitters that where you can drill the holes into the rock. You put this pneumatic device and you split the rock. There's many different ways to break rock.
So can you quickly put the photo up of the, the diagram up that you had earlier? That showed the hill? So so these elements are put into the ground to assist in the the blasting. So there's less blasting.
The, the.
And in the excavation.
It's in the excavation. If you zoom in, please, on this area down in here, I can try to illustrate.
And is this thing called the knob? Somebody had mentioned a knob earlier.
So if, if we, for the sake of this discussion, we, we say that this material that can, from here down into this, the base of this excavation, this is rock, whether, regardless of the excavation technique, there would be a vertical excavation. They would either drill holes or they would break the rock in vertical, in, in vertical sections, using any one of these techniques.
Okay. So all that stuff goes in and it helps to bust out all of this rock?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm not going to, I'm not a chemist because I spent my whole life in the media and advertising business and I know nothing about this, but I know that crap flows downhill and my family drinks it and tens of thousands of other people are going to be drinking all this stuff. And so my concern.
Sir, ask a question. I, we realize your concern is for public comment. Ask him a question, please.
But this is to the point.
Okay, good.
Is from, and you're an environmental engineer with a master's from Stevens, if I have my notes correctly. And is how are we going to prevent all of this at the headwaters of the Canute Brook from going into the Canute Brook and going downstream and into the water that we're drinking if we're using chemical expanders and other methods in addition to the other concerns of the blasting? And it's, there's one other concern. So how, how do we? If we're like, what, what are, I don't know, the aluminum and the other stuff that? I don't have the time now, right, to hear this?
No, I'm listening. We're listening. So basically, the question is, you have not testified to an exact way to do this. Is that correct?
I haven't, so, right. So I have not testified to how this will be done. I simply identified in the report the, the, the typical methods that are utilized for excavation. The contractor must choose based on the available information and within the, within the regulations of, of using these materials, how to use them and what's the best application for moving the rock.
And is it possible that more than one method is used depending on the area?
It, it is. It could be any combination. As I've testified to and written in the report, there could be any combination of, of such methods.
But we all could be having an Aaron Brockovich moment here.
Well, these are, these are, these products are used universally and I am not aware of any, any hazardous effect of them, as long as they're used properly and, and under, under control conditions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any of the members of the public have any questions from Mr. Seal on his testimony? Please come up and be identified. You have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jerry Companion. And I worked in construction for about 20 years, so I know what's going on and all about it, drainage systems, sewer lines. And I'm asking, do we have a schematic or a blueprint on the sewer lines or piping going from the building to the sewer system that exists already?
I, I don't have one.
Can that be presented to the public with that?
We've already provided testimony regarding the sewer system.
Yes. Thank you. And the other thing is chemical expansion. You just explained to the other gentleman what the chemicals are all about, but will the public begin an MSDS sheet?
I would imagine if they, if the contractor uses that, they will have an MSDS sheet. And if there's any reporting requirements that that will be provided.
Okay, so that's definite.
Ladies and gentlemen, an MSDS sheet is a material, material safety data sheet. So it describes what the chemical is and all the known inferences about that chemical. I just want everybody to be clear. So when we talk shorthand.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
And so that would be presented if that choice is made by using the chemical expansion.
I would imagine so.
It has to be because that's required by the state and local governments.
For the record, Mr. Seal and his firm are not the contractor.
Excuse me?
You say it again.
Yeah. For the record, just Mr. Seal testified that it's not his firm that would be the contractor. I just want to make that clear, that he didn't represent, that he would be the contractor, who would be the one responsible for that. But thank you very much for bringing that up.
Well, and thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public have any questions from Mr. Seal on his testimony? You have three minutes. Please come up, be identified. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening. Justin Goldsman. Just a question. Goldman, you had mentioned in your initial remarks that there was the possibility of different methods for excavation. You mentioned splitters, chemicals, blasting.
Correct.
Your proposal, your presentation tonight was based on the assumption of the blasted use of, 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 of using or moving forward with blast.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting one method over another.
Okay. Is there, is there a way for you to maybe illuminate any of those construction plans, with especially with the, the underground parking units in a, in a differential light based on if blasting is used, if chemical is used, if, you know, splitters are used and how that may impact the difference of the plan?
I, I don't understand your question. Not following you.
Will the proposed parking deck alter in any way dependent upon the technique of excavation?
I would not imagine that it would. The, the, the intent is to build what's shown on the construction plans, whenever those are finalized, and the means and methods chosen by the contractor have to achieve that objective.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm just, I don't know if that forces anything to shift depending on if you use a chemical or not. That's all I was asking. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions? Please come up, be identified, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Joyce Rudin. You testified in your response to a question that in regard to noise from blasting. Are there regulations in New Jersey that require contractors to give notice before blasting and set blasting schedules?
Yes, they'll, they'll be, there are, there are public notifications that, that, that must be, they're mandatory that it, that would be made and all that information would be shared.
Can you confirm whether or not the noise levels during blasting reach between 120 and 140 decibels at the blast?
He didn't testify to that.
I know he didn't. I'm just asking him. He, he testified that blasting does not cause so much noise. So I'm asking if, if.
I testified that, that blasting, if it's done properly, doesn't create the levels of noise that I'm hearing are of concern.
So what, what level of noise would you describe it as?
If we're talking qualitatively, it, it, it could just sound like a boom.
A boom?
Yeah, if it's done properly. Correct.
Like a boom during a wartime boom?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop this. We're, we're going off on a tangent. So he has testified, wait a second, one talks at a time. He has testified that he is not representing the company doing the blasting. He's not testifying as to exactly how it's going to be done, which I think is the question you're asking. We're going down a rabbit hole that he doesn't have the right answers. So asking these questions is, he's the wrong person and I don't want the public or the board to hear answers that are not in his expertise.
And to confirm the councilwoman's question, I just want to confirm that we do have the affirmative obligation to provide full notice and schedules and we will live up to that obligation.
Okay. He did testify in terms of the sound quality and that's what I was, that's what I was referencing.
But he didn't testify to the decibel at which you also asked that question.
No, he did not, but he used the word boom. So I was trying.
And that's why I said we're going down a rabbit hole.
What does it mean by a boom?
We're going down a rabbit hole and.
Can you respond to what you meant by stating that it would be a boom?
Yeah. I'm simply trying to differentiate between what I'm understanding the public's concerns are over these noise levels versus what the, an actual controlled blast sounds like. And, and there's a very dramatic, without trying to qualify what that sound is, I would say that it's not, it's, it's, it lacks the, the effect that I'm hearing is of concern.
Would a boom cause vibrations?
Well, the, the, the pressure through the rock is what causes vibrations.
So yes, there would be vibrations?
There, there's vibrations generated by a blast. Yes, there's, there's vibrations generated by drilling. There's vibrations generated by a lot of construction activities and the, the magnitude of those varies by the source and by using controlled blasting techniques, you're limiting the amount of charge per each delay in the blast that gets out into the rock. And by using additional controlled techniques where you create line or channel drilling, you don't, the, the, the pressure doesn't propagate beyond that and it gets controlled.
Could the, the ground vibrations affect the residents who are living closest to this site?
Well, by effect, do you mean, would you notice a vibration?
Yes. And could it, could it, could they feel it within their house? And could it potentially do any damage within their homes?
Well, I, I'd say you could, we all can sense vibrations, sure. But the, the, the purpose of a controlled blasting program is to prevent them from becoming detrimental.
And is that what the regulations are designed to do?
Yes, it is.
Could the vibrations be similar to an earthquake?
Well, it's a different type of vibration. So again, as it, the, the intent, the intent of the program is to prevent any such damage effects. That's all I can say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mr. Seal on his testimony? Please come up, be identified. You have three minutes.
Jill's a Paul Howell Road. Thank you for your testimony. I especially appreciated your explaining the difference between the 1.5, I believe, number and the two number of Princeton Hydro. And I just want to make sure I understand you correctly. So if I, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that neither the 1.5 or the 2.0 number guarantees that the slope won't collapse, that the difference is based on the amount of damage that would be done if the slope collapsed. So the US engineers base it on because a dam, you said, would wipe out a whole city. They require 2.0 and because if this slope happened to collapse, it would only wipe out maybe half a dozen houses. 1.5 is an adequate number? Is, is that what you're saying?
No, that's, that's not it. 1.5, a factor safety 1.0 means that the, the, the forces that tend to drive failure are equal to the forces that tend to resist failure. So at 1.5, you're 50% higher, you have 50% more resisting forces than you have driving forces. At two, you have twice the number, amount of driving or resisting forces relative to the resist, uh, driving forces. So in both cases, the slope is stable.
So why would the US engineers have a different number than you? That's the case.
Well, the, the, the US Corps of Engineers, they, they, I, I suppose you'd have to ask them why they have such a high number. It could have to do with the way they, they, way they analyze or their, their, their consultants analyze conditions.
I may have misunderstood. I thought you said something like a dam could take out a whole city, but maybe I misheard.
No, you did not.
No? Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Any member of the public have any questions? Come right up. Please say your name. For the record, you have three minutes.
Maria DePama, Lappas Circle in the Highlands. I have a question. The three ways that you're planning on excavating with the chemicals, blasting, I can't remember the third one. How?
I'm sorry. I think Mr. Blocker wants to.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's testimony that we plan on excavating those ways. I believe Mr. Seal gave examples of the different means and methods of excavation and that the exact means and excavation would be determined by the contractor in the field pursuant to applicable regulations.
If I may, Mr. Seal's testimony was there are a variety of methods. He didn't rule out any, so the question is quite.
Let's be fair. He didn't rule them in. He said there are methods. That's all he said.
Correct. And now the, now the questioner is asking about the methods in the universe of methods that Mr. Seal was referring to.
And that's fine.
It's quite a proper question.
And that's fine. I didn't say no.
I'm responding to Mr. Blocker. And I believe the question, I believe the question presumed that he suggested that certain methods would be used. And I just wanted to make clear that that was not his testimony.
Mr. Seal, did you, did you recommend one method over another or did you say there are many methods?
I don't, I'm not recommending one over another. I think that, that has.
And ask your question now.
So whatever method is used, how will that affect the people in the Highlands where I live over this long project air quality for us to be happy, healthy and breathe all the, that in?
You can answer.
It's a long project. There's going to be a lot of dust in the air. There's going to be, if it's used with chemicals, that'll be in the air. How does that protect us, our children, our pets? How does, where, where is our guarantee that we won't be affected by health-wise?
Did you testify that things were going to be in the air?
A chemical would be if it's used, wouldn't it? I mean, you can't put a chemical in a bubble.
The, the contractor will have to choose the best available methods for the, for the, to meet the project requirements. And this is for the duration, as you pointed out, of the project. I, I, I said the contractor will have to select the appropriate means and methods of, of excavation, material handling, cleanup, all those things to be compliant with all the regulations that he's subject to for maintaining health and safety.
So would we be notified of that or do we find out after it's all started?
You can answer the question, sir.
I, well, I, it's not my, I, I, I understand you will. I, I don't control the contractor, but I understand that all the regulations that will, that will be set, that are set forth for the construction are to be complied with.
In addition to our obligation to do so under the settlement agreement with the township of West Orange, we will 100% provide notice, timing, there'll be on a website. There, there are many things that we have agreed to that we will continue to abide by in good faith.
Not only will that be in the area of us, it will be in, it's not going to stay right where we are. It's going to be in all the surrounding Essex Hills, Roseland. It's going to travel with the air. It's not subject just to us. The wind blows this way and the wind blows that way and all those chemicals will be traveled wherever, you know, however.
Man, you're testifying.
Okay. Well, that's what I wanted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public, for the first round? Does anybody have a first round question that hasn't been, okay, come up, come up, sir?
Just one follow-up question. Seth Weissletter, Howell Drive. Going back to the safety factor of.
Going back to the safety factor of Princeton Hydro suggesting 2.0, you're using 1.5. Since our homes are at the bottom of the slope, shouldn't more conservative standards be applied to protect our safety?
Well.
I mean, what with 1.5?
1.5 is a industry standard used in all residential and commercial construction. And our analysis even utilized lower strength values than we could have. So the factors of safety that we could have calculated in our analysis could be considerably higher than 1.5.
At this point, being, maybe just staying conservative, but what else would you recommend to give us a peace of mind? Not only during construction, which has been focused on, but five to 10 years from now as things will change. What else can we recommend? I know there's things in place, but there's things that we can be, we're being conservative. And that's where the fears are coming from, because we have two professional engineering reports with conflicting comments and conflicting giving us not a peace of mind. So what else would you recommend that be in place now to give us that certainty during and then after construction in perpetuity?
I don't have anything else to add.
Does the risk of failure change from pre to post-construction?
No, it does not. It means, as I testified, that the factor save, the stability of the slope of the existing condition doesn't change after the building is put in place, because there's no loading onto the slope.
You're talking about load, but what about, and I'm gonna add to the conversation, if I may, what about environmental, the 100-year storm, a slight earthquake, other things, would that contribute?
We've analyzed the stability of the slope under seismic conditions. We've analyzed the stability of the slope under a saturated condition, and it's still stable.
Do any of the members of the public come right up?
Debbie Butansky. So the question I have is, this isn't like using a laser. What is the lateral effects of whatever modalities you use when you're trying to excavate? How far laterally? How many feet?
Typically, the methods are fairly controlled, and the impact is finite. It's within, it's maybe a few feet you get in.
Well, how many few, because we only have seven at certain points.
It's 10, you have seven feet at the close, no, it's not in my experience, no.
So what, in your experience, what is the max?
As long as the material is, as long as the methods that are used to excavate are controlled, the, we're talking about really no overbreaks. So it's within, I don't know, a foot or two at the most.
And the other question is, what is the role of the geotech person with the developer? Do you guys recommend what they should use? How do you guys interact?
Are you talking about it, well, at this phase, or are you talking about during construction?
Both.
So we are asked to provide services, which in this case was to analyze the stability of the slope, and we made recommendations. We analyzed the conditions, and we made recommendations. During construction, if we were to be retained, we would have a specific scope of work, and that might be monitoring or inspecting some activity.
But do you make recommendations as to the modality for excavation?
We make recommendations on the type of excavation that would be appropriate or that could be used. And then the contractor has to choose. We don't direct means and methods to contractors.
But they would ask you to give recommendations on the optimum method?
Not necessarily. And we have a report here that provides suggested, you know, a universe of methods that can be used.
And a follow-up to my colleague's question about the toxicity that could emanate from whatever modalities are used during the construction. For example, the air pollution. What is the developer's responsibility to control or contain the potential toxicity to the air and to the soils?
Well, I'm sure there are state, if not federal, air pollution regulations that have to be complied with, which I, as I understand, there's a developer's agreement in place to comply with.
Just for the record, right now, there's a settlement agreement. There is no developer's agreement at this time. That is something that would typically happen post-approval during compliance, just for the record.
Thank you. Come right up, ma'am.
Quick question.
Say your name again. I'm sorry, say your name again for the record. I know you said her earlier.
Susan Panulo, still within the 200-foot notice line. When, in your experience, when there is a situation of two very different opinions, one being things are safe and one being things are not safe, when there are different risk-benefit analyses done, how is that usually settled out? How is that usually adjudicated and managed?
Well, I would say that's probably done at the level of this board. In this case, for example, we have our position, and I understand that there's a position, a different position that's taken by Princeton Hydro.
So going back to the liability issue, then, does that put liability on an adjudicating board? Is it the responsibility of the public to be asking good questions to help everybody make decisions? How is that managed in your experience?
Again, he didn't testify as to liability. It's not his job.
In your experience, how is this usually managed, then, just to clarify for me? Two completely different opinions, safe versus not safe.
Well, I honestly don't typically encounter these. I don't know how Princeton arrived at the values that they did and their statements that they made. We're confident in our analysis that it's safe and it will be safe.
And your September 15 report was designed to address Princeton Hydro's testimony and comments, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Seal and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Seal and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Seal. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. Off the record.
Three, two, one. It's showtime. Welcome back ladies and gentlemen on Zoom and in the town hall. Now we have Mr. Plocke and his next expert.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant would like to call Carl Penkey. I should say recall Carl, Carl Penkey.
So you realize that you are still under oath?
Yes.
And is your license still active in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Mr. Plocke.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Penkey. At the last most recent meeting, testimony was given by the objectors traffic expert, Mr. Litworny. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Were you able to review his testimony from the last meeting?
Yes, I was.
Okay, and did you review the report that Mr. Litworny had provided to this board?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you were prepared to offer testimony to comment on that report?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead.
Certainly. So at the last meeting, Mr. Litworny presented his findings of a report and slides that proffered several assertions with regard to this application that I think require correction and/or clarification. There are several broad categories that he touched on, but I think the first one is probably first and foremost, the most important one, and it is the characterization and determination of the circulation system within this site and how it is derived. Mr. Litworny.
One second, sir.
Did you get that?
Go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Litworny is correct that the residential site improvement standards that are published by and governed by the DCA are the governing standards for this site. Under those standards, Mr. Litworny made, offered the or proffered the opinion that the site circulation roadways, this project and its circulation system would be categorized as a cul-de-sac and as a result, based upon the cul-de-sac standards, and he actually mixed and matched the standards between a standard cul-de-sac and a multifamily cul-de-sac, which have two different standards, but regardless, under those standards, it would suggest in his opinion that it would limit the number of units that could be developed on this site. So let me be first clear on the residential site improvement standards and how they are applied. With regard to site improvement standards, if you read through the standards, the application of those standards start at the property line. They're clear in the actual report, and in fact, that is such an important element of the residential site improvement standards that one of the four clarifications maintained by DCA.
One second, sir. And I'm going to read it specifically says that the residential site improvement standards do not require that developments built before the rules be improved to meet the standards. This is even true when a proposed development relies on an existing development for its street network. And then further, it goes on to say that the ADT, which is what we use to calculate and determine whether it's a residential access, minor, major access, should be limited based on the ADT of the street segment that serves the proposed development, not the ADT of the proposed and existing developments.
Mr. Litworny inferred that that is true. He actually pointed to those very specifics, but then he went on.
Could you explain what RSIS and ADT to the public is so everybody has a great understanding?
RSIS is residential site improvement standards. It's the governing regulations for design standards for residential developments throughout the state of New Jersey. ADT is basically average daily traffic. It's an estimated calculation of the traffic generated by a use. But Mr. Litworny went on to infer that regardless of that clarification and the written language in the regulation itself, that there was something in RSS that said, yeah, but if it's a big project or something other that you have to take that into account. And that's absolutely not true. The standards are direct, clear, and black and white, and the clarifier is black and white. So going back to my testimony last year, this project under the residential site improvement standards has three points of access. It connects at Warner Road, it connects at Kuzic, and it has, and it connects at Howell. Those are three points of access. Two of them are proposed to be controlled as emergency access. One to Howell, fully emergency access. Two, at the determination of this board, would be emergency access. As such, the internal roadway systems are not a cul-de-sac. They're classified as a minor collector. And the design standards that were used by Mr. Anderson in designing the site meet the requirements as defined in RSIS for the design of a minor collector road system. I would go on to indicate that Mr. Litworny further started to discuss that you should take both sites together, which clearly RSIS does not require, and inferred that the existing Highlands area is actually a cul-de-sac. And that's actually not the case either. Oval Road has two points of access. It has the connection to Eagle Rock Road, which is used on a daily basis, and it also has an emergency access connection into Essex Falls by the extension of the emergency access easement that's enjoyed between the connection of Werner and over to the private road section and easement that exists. So there are two points of access along Oval Road, and the Highlands has two points of access to Oval Road. It has Bondgar Drive and it's Werners Road, which interconnects inside with its other connecting roadway systems, Davie Drive, Kuzic Drive. All of that starts to make a multiple grid of streets that connect. So the existing Highlands would not be classified as a cul-de-sac. So the project as it stands is a system of roads that are characterized as minor access. Now, I want to say that there has been discussion through the year about Howell Drive and the emergency access connection. If you recall my testimony from over a year ago, I indicated that I believe that's a good component of this project. It's certainly supported by the IH zone, and it will benefit not only the new people that live in this community, but it will benefit the remaining portion of the community by providing another point of access for emergency services. However, I would note that quite frankly, we don't need it. If that went away, the only cul-de-sac that would be classified on the internal system would be Road D. Road D extending from the roundabout back to Building D would then become a multifamily cul-de-sac. A multifamily cul-de-sac has a required ADT of no more than 1,000 vehicles per day. Building D with 166 units would generate about 776, uh, vehicles per day below that standard uh, and could stand alone without that emergency access. I am not advocating for the elimination of that access. I'm just pointing it out that we could live without it if this board's so determined, uh, but I think it is an advantage to both the, the, the community uh, that is being built as well as the existing, uh, community to maintain that. And to be clear, it's an emergency access. The fact is, it'll probably see some pedestrians, it'll see a snowplow. The likelihood that it'll ever see an emergency vehicle or any kind of traffic is very, very, very small, just as the likelihood as the existing emergency access connection that people in this room may or may not know exists on Oval Road probably hasn't seen much more than a snowplow through the years. Uh, and that's the purpose of an emergency access. It's there if it's needed and can be used by emergency services, however they need to, to respond. Uh, so that larger segment being said, uh, which is most important, there's certainly no restrictions on the number of units based upon RSIS uh, on, on, on the site. Mr. Litwornia also went on to assert a few other things. Uh, he indicated that in his review of the plans, and he wasn't clear which plans he reviewed, uh, that we, that Mr. Anderson had violated the RSIS standard designs for roadway grades. Uh, he implied that there were roadway grades on this site greater than 10%. Uh, to be clear, for minor access roadways, RSIS does permit up to a 10% uh, grade. In fact, RSIS permits a little more than that in areas such as this where you have hilly terrain, you could actually add 2% and not be in violation. So in fact, Mr. Anderson could have designed up to 12% profiles on the roads. None of Mr. Anderson's, uh, road profiles exceed 10%. Uh, they vary, 7%, 4%, uh, they're all over the place, but they are certainly compliant and, and Mr. Anderson has testified to that, and he can continue to, to represent the design of his plans. With regard to grades, Mr. Litwornia also seemed to suggest that he thought based upon his looking at the plans, that some of the side street approaches, the driveway approaches to the, uh, to the, uh, ma- to the minor access, uh, to the minor arterial, uh, which is supposed to be graded at 5% within 50 feet of the intersection for reasons that he explained, snow and stopping and so forth. He thought they were exceeding that. Uh, the plans are clear. Uh, Mr. Mr. Uh, Anderson did design to RSIS standards, and in my review of them, and in talking to Mr. Anderson, we meet the 50 feet, 5% grading. In fact, uh, many of the driveways are graded at 2% or less. I didn't find any instances in, in double checking Mr. Anderson's plans and the grading plans where I thought it, it might be questionable. Uh, certainly if your review engineer has any questions on that or needs to see something, I also saw nothing in the plans that indicate that we can't achieve, uh, 5% or less. Uh, so I think that was important, uh, to clarify. Uh, Mr. Litwornia also then went on to discuss the improvements at Oval Road and Eagle Rock Avenue. Uh, and I gave lengthy testimony, uh, to those improvements. Uh, a year ago, I won't rehash them, but basically, the applicant, uh, by the settlement agreement, uh, and as documented in the traffic impact study, will be constructing improvements at Eagle Rock Avenue and Oval Road. Those improvements will include widening of Eagle Rock Avenue to provide a left turn, a suggestion of Mr. Litwornia. Uh, he would have seen that if he read the document. Uh, it'll include signalization of the intersection, and it'll include proper pedestrian accommodation as we, we talked about with this board uh, a year, year ago to, to accommodate crossings and so forth. Uh, Mr. Litwornia suggested that that intersection, based on my analysis, would be operating at a level of service C. Again, to refresh the board's memory and the public's memory, engineers, traffic engineers boil down all our calculations to a simplistic rating of A to F. A being excellent levels of service and operations. F being failing conditions. Doesn't mean gridlock. It just means you might show up at a signal at the end of a, a cycle and have to wait a cycle to get through, or you might be in a queue of three or four, five vehicles at an unsignalized intersection. But bottom line, it's, it's delays that are a little less tolerable to, to residents. The fact of the matter is, the intersection calculations that we provided and the analysis show that that intersection will operate at an A level of service during both peak hours. Uh, he also inferred that our analysis did not consider the fact that we do need to coordinate the signals with, uh, Laurel Avenue. That is untrue. If, if he had reviewed our analysis as documented in the report, he would have seen in the analysis that the analysis specifically considered a coordinated system. It incorporates the anticipated offset we'll be designing, and that level of service A reflects that coordination and operation. Lastly, Mr. Litwornia, with regard to the signal, inferred that I'm violating some sort of law in the manual of uniform traffic control devices, uh, with regard to spacing. Uh, he suggested the signal is 400 feet from Laurel Avenue. It is not 400 feet. It is actually between 800 to 900 feet, depending on whether you measure it center line to center line or stop bars to, to future stop bar. Regardless, there is no law in the manual of uniform traffic control devices that says that you can't have a signal, uh, uh, within 1,000 feet of another signal. Uh, and you certainly, uh, can coordinate signals, uh, and there are multiple times that we, we build signals closer with much closer offsets. Uh, what Mr. Litwornia was pointing to in the manual of uniform traffic control devices is one of, uh, the clauses, uh, uh, that we use as traffic engineers to determine if a signal should be implemented. And in the manual of uniform traffic control devices, there are a series of criteria called warrants, and there's specifically, uh, uh, different criteria and warrants that traffic engineers use to determine if a signal should be considered and or, uh, is appropriate to be installed. The majority of the, the warrants that we use as traffic engineer are actually the first four warrants. Uh, they are basically volume-based warrants. Uh, there's an eight-hour warrant. Do you meet certain criteria eight hours a day? There's a four-hour warrant. Do you meet criteria four hours every day? There's a peak hour warrant that's u- usually used in a unique look situation like a manufacturing facility letting out a bunch of people at, at a time. Uh, as documented in the traffic study, we meet the volume warrants, uh, the eight-hour volume warrants, the four-hour volume warrants, and as I had testified to, we were certifying that, uh, for the county, and we know the county does not have an objection to a signal uh, at this location. What Mr. Litwornia was referring to, I had to read through the MUTCT because I was a little concerned. And he was referring to a, a substandard within warrant six. It's a unique warrant. Uh, in 40 years, I've never used it, didn't really even know it existed. And that's a warrant that is used in a situation if you have an unsignalized intersection that would not otherwise warrant a traffic signal based on the, the more typical volume warrants. Uh, and it's basically an analysis that's done to see if installation of a traffic signal at that location would benefit the operation of a car, and that's a coordination, uh, warrant. Uh, and within that, there is a substandard that basically says you should not use this warrant if it's within 1,000 feet of another signalized intersection. Has nothing to do, uh, it is not a law, it is not a restriction, and certainly engineers, traffic engineers, design traffic signals, uh, all the time that are much closer than 1,000 feet. Uh, and there'll be no issue designing this signal, and it'll operate at good levels of service, and as I testified to, will benefit the residents, the existing community, as well as accommodate the additional traffic generated, uh, by, uh, this site. Uh, Mr. Litwornia also went on to suggest that our sidewalk system, which is quite robust, and was described by Mr. Anderson and, and verified by myself, was not ADA compliant, uh, because it does not, did not meet the 5% grades. Uh, again, Mr. Litwornia unfortunately is incorrect. Uh, under the ADA guidelines, sidewalk that runs adjacent to roadways can run the slope of the roadway. So we, it, so we have a 10% roadway. ADA compliant sidewalk is built behind the curb at the running slope of the roadway. So all of the sidewalks designed by Mr. Anderson are ADA compliant. Certainly, all the handicap ramps, uh, and landings are ADA compliant. Uh, and, uh, his accessible routes, I'll leave, it's, his plans stand for what they are, and he's testified to it. Uh, Mr. Litwornia did identify that the RSIS does require sidewalks on both sides of the roadways. If you recall in my testimony from a year ago, we did identify that, and we did indicate that we were requesting a de minimis exception from that standard. The only place where that, uh, we don't meet that is on the section of Warner Drive Extension, uh, from where it meets the property line up to the roundabout. There is sidewalk provided on one side. And then, uh, on Road D from the roundabout heading up to Building D, we opted to put a sidewalk on one side. If you recall the proofs, I'll give them to you again. With regard to Road D, it's simple. We have two sidewalks that can connect the community from the, uh, amenity building and the other buildings to Road D. Mr. Anderson just opted to take that sidewalk and rather run the lengthy route along the second side of the road. He put a direct route, ADA compliant path between Building D and the amenity. So it is a better use of sidewalk and pavement area for that connection. With regard to the connection down Warner, Warner Drive, as I testified to, we have three sidewalks that run down to the adjacent community. Two along Kuzic, uh, all the way down to the property line, and one along Warner. I would respectfully suggest that provides more than adequate pedestrian connectivity to the adjacent community that has no sidewalks. Uh, and there is no point of, uh, of destination on the side of the, uh, side, the, the road uh, of Warner Road, uh, that pedestrian would want to get to. So I think this board is well within its rights to recognize and, and grant that de minimis exception. Uh, and I would support that. It does not, uh, inhibit and or change the robust, robust walking paths that are provided uh, within this site. So I thought that was important to revisit. We did agree with him on that, and we did, uh, provide the proofs, uh, for that. Uh, Mr. Litwornia went on to discuss parking to a little extent. Uh, parking is RSIS compliant. Mr. Anderson has stated, we will be providing the 15% EV-ready parking throughout the site. He has some external to the building, and there'll be, uh, some internal to the building, but he will be uh, providing that as part of the design of the MEP for the building. The other aspect of parking that Mr. Litwornia suggested is that the tandem parking that we are using under the building is not permitted by RSIS. Uh, that actually is not true. RSIS does not define how you assemble the parking standards. Uh, it defines the sizes, the nine-by-18 parking stalls, the aisle whist, the 24-foot, uh, foot aisle whist, but it does not prohibit how we put those elements together. In fact, RSIS does recognize tandem parking. Uh, in a townhouse community, a garage driveway combination is tandem parking. There's no difference between a unit having a tandem parking in the garage under this building versus somebody that owns a townhouse building at home with a single-car garage that parks in their garage and parks on their driveway. It's controlled by the same people, and the movement of cars are controlled by the same people. So there is no prohibition under RSIS with regard to that design. And as testified by the architect, uh, it is common in design these days from podium-designed, uh, parking or underbuilder building parking. So I just wanted to prohibition on that from RSIS. It is a designer's and owner's choice with regard to that assemblage. Uh, that really, I think, summarizes, uh, oh, there, there was one other thing that I, that disturbed me a little bit. Uh, Mr. Litwornia suggested that there was no air quality analysis submitted because there is a law requiring air quality analysis for parking garages over 100 spaces. Uh, in 40 years, I've never seen that requirement. I did look for it. Uh, I am not aware of it. I am aware that in the design of underbuilding garage and parking decks, there are requirements for, uh, free air, uh, and how much of the sods have to be free, and if not, you have to go to a mechanical ventilation system. That is a building design and building permit, uh, issue, and, uh, the architects will comply with that, otherwise we will not get permits. So if mechanical ventilation is needed in these buildings, it'll be done. But there is no requirement to submit to the planning board an air quality analysis for parking garages with over 100, uh, spaces. Uh, and, and I think I hit the points that I wanted to hit that I thought needed to be, uh, touched on.
Right. Can we get some of that free air in here?
Yeah.
All right, I have nothing further for Mr. Penkey. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor McCarty, do you have any questions?
Mr. Penkey, thank you very much. So, Mr. Litwornia's report starts with the cul-de-sacs. That's, that's how he starts, and I didn't see it even on the maps that he provided. I didn't see a cul-de-sac on here. So my question would be that if it's not a cul-de-sac, then that means that the numbers that his ADT is average daily trips, they would have to, they would have to be different.
Correct.
Right?
So, so for a minor collector and the ADT that differentiate going from minor collector to a major collector is 3,500 vehicles per day. We're, we're generating more than a, just a residential access, which I think is 1,000 to 1,500 someplace in that area, but we're generating below 3,500 trips per day. That creates the minor collector characterization. Uh, and, 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 and that's the difference. The, 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 the cul-de-sac, where you have no other way, uh, to service the site is where you start to get into, and there's two differentiations. It's, it's interesting in RSIS because he was right. It's not a volume issue because there's more than enough capacity to handle operations. It's, it's more of a layout issue. And there's, there's two standards for a cul-de-sac. There's one where you're doing a residential subdivision serving signal family homes, and the ADT limitation on that is 250 trips for one point of access. Uh, the other is what they call a multifamily cul-de-sac, which I just described Road D would be if we eliminated the Howell. And in that, for some reason, RSIS allows up to 1,000 trips. Same issue, same number of units in there, same number of people, uh, or more people, obviously, uh, just the two different standards. But what RSIS does say is, what obviates a cul-de-sac is if you have another means of access for the free movement of emergency vehicles. And one of the options that they offer, which is often done, not ideally, but often done, is what they call a boulevard. You separate the, the inbound and the outbound. You make both wide. And the theory is tree falls across one side, that emergency vehicle can still go up and down the other side. What's been done over the years is, is as an alternative to that, and a better design is just an emergency access connection someplace else in the site. In this site, you have the Oval Road emergency access that connects into Essex Fells. You have the emergency access that's proposed to, to Howell Drive. All of that, uh, provides the ability for your emergency services to get to this site. And in fact, in terms of the, the access, the, the emergency access for Howell, uh, your emergency service actually under the easement would have the right to open it to trap. They have the right to open it to emergency vehicles as they see fit, which in my opinion would mean if there was some extreme event that shut down this community from getting down to Eagle Rock, they could actually open that. It actually exists. It's, there's a 20-foot paved path there. It could flow traffic.
So we did hear testimony about an emergency. We have talked about a boulevard there. Um, and we did hear testimony about, or we did hear public comment about an emergency situation. But how would a resident, if this happened to a resident, if there's an emergency, how would a resident be able to use the emergency?
It would be controlled by emergency services. It is within the town's purview as it should be.
Okay.
Make that decision.
Okay. And we have different points here, Howell and Oval. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Ms. Capford, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Penkey. Um, some of my questions are related to the, the emergency access. So when you, when you say emergency access, is that, uh, just for emergency vehicles, or can you clarify, is that also for residents? Who, uh, who can use it?
It, it's really control of the emergency services. It, it's, it's a, it's a road. It's, it's, uh, improved, uh, and, uh, if emergency, primarily the intent is for emergency vehicles if, uh, but if there was for some reason, some need to do it, emergency services could control that in a different manner. It's, it's a traversable road.
Okay. And you said it's, it's fully controlled by the emergency services.
Correct. So, so the homeowners association can't make the option to open it. Uh, the existing homeowners association can't do that. The future homeowners, uh, uh, management can't do it. It is within the control of emergency services and the municipality.
Okay. And what is, what, if any, des- design criteria is there for an emergency access?
Uh, basically, it's, it's an improved, uh, road. It's something your, your, uh, your emergency services should be comfortable with, can handle. Basically, it's it's an improved road. It's something your 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 emergency services should be comfortable with, can handle their equipment. In the case of Oval Road, it's a twenty foot easement that connects into Essex Falls. In the case of the Howell Road design, it's basically a sixteen foot paved road down to Howell.
And are there any, is there criteria for slopes? I I think there had been.
You basically follow the the same slopes of the road. So in terms of the slope down to Howell, that's ten percent. Same as it's following the max. So it is traversable. Just to give some some sense, a handicap ramp is eight point three percent. So while it is a slope, it is not a non-negotiable slope.
Eight percent.
And I think my other questions are about sidewalk. I'm I'm not sure that you testified to all of this tonight. Some of this may be back to last year.
It is.
Yeah, so answer what you can, I guess. Was there consideration given to putting sidewalk? Oh, okay, sorry. Putting sidewalk on Warner Road and Oval Oval Road. Outside of the immediate West Essex Highlands to to gain access to sidewalk on Eagle Rock Avenue.
Not outside our property bounds.
Okay. And I believe this was asked at another meeting, but just for clarification, who owns? Do you know who owns those two roadways?
I want to defer.
Is it?
Yeah, I I I can answer it. The roadway is owned by the property owners who front Oval Road. However, my client, going back in connection, I believe even prior to the approval of the West Essex Highland condominiums. There was an easement granted in Oval Road and there was certain agreements which are recorded. Which require my client to maintain and repair Oval Road, but gives. My client and I believe the general public, the right to use it as a public right, as if it was a public road, but it is private.
Okay.
I I'm sure comments that it's private property. It is one hundred percent private property. That all the property owners going back to the nineteen eighties. Entered into an agreement and there are recorded easements that give the right to use. Up until the entrance to the condominium on Warner. The right, and I could get the specific language, to be used for public use. And all the property owners agree to that. Those agreements run. Property which is subject to an easement. My client and the public have the right to use those roads.
To that last. Mr. Afren.
Thank you. To that last point, I don't think we have anything in the record at this point identifying those easements. Or as Mr. Plucker said, the actual language, does the applicant intend to provide those easements? Or have documents comprised that because that's over the years perhaps?
Percent, absolutely.
I I would ask that that be done. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, that's it for me for now.
Thank you. Chairman Garina, do you have any questions? Mr. Penkey on his testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I have a question for you, looking at the roadways and understanding the roadways and basically with pedestrian safety. You know what our need is, put your hand down, I hear you. What our need is, is when, you know, people are walking, going through and coming through the development. Will we be able to incorporate speed calming infrastructure into the roadways? To reduce the speed and control the speeds throughout the development?
We can. Mr. Anderson is is open to working with your engineer to institute. Where applicable, any additional. Safety, we would like this to be what we're designing it for, a low speed community road. It's self-contained. So we do have some stretches of road that probably should have a traffic calming feature or two to it. Particularly maybe a raised crosswalks. I I think we talked to that last time I was here. There was a few things. There was a few suggestions you had made at each of the garage entrances. And we've agreed to to those. But yeah, we have no problem adding a few features. Certainly to our benefit and to our future residents' benefit.
Okay, I have one other question too. And this, you know, as I said, is there any possibility, are the roadways? Wide enough to accommodate bike lanes?
They 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 are not. They are residential site improvement standards actually. Set the standard for my for a minor access, minor or minor collector road. It's actually twenty feet wide. If you recall my testimony, Mr. Anderson actually chose to do a little wider. He went to twenty two feet. But that doesn't create bike lanes. These are share the road, roadways. And part of the reason is to keep them low speed. You start going wider. The reason why you have high speeds on roads like Oval Road is they're forty feet wide and you feel like you can go up a racetrack. So the purpose of RSIS, one of the reasons why it was established, is those were issues that were being faced statewide. So the the roadways were selected to to fit the environment, to fit the ADT. And to create residential places.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Do you have any questions, Mr. Penkey?
Sure. Um, there was something in the in the Lutworny report suggesting that Verona would need to consent. To allow the Howell emergency access, something about it being. Because it was a municipal border, there was like a one sentence line that I just caught when I was rereading it today. Did you see that?
I I did see that. That's not my area of expertise. It does fall within West Orange. There is your IH zone, which calls for the connection to be made. It's a road connection that that's typical, but I will have to defer to the legal interpretation. I I don't know why they would have to consent. There's no site plan application to them. There is no regulatory. Provision for those lots that fall within West Orange.
And Mr. Alper, if I may add, that allegation has been made. There are old approvals being referenced. We have never seen any documents to the contrary. If anybody has any, we'd love to look at them and we'd certainly address them.
Okay. Similarly, are there deed restrictions on those properties that would prevent, even if you own them? That would prevent them from being used for emergency roadways?
Uh, not to our knowledge.
Okay. Um, and this is probably too hypothetical, but in an emergency, in an emergency where. West Orange officials determined it was necessary to evacuate or whether to. Or whether to have everyone leave or just to allow as an option to leave, you know, a tree is down on Oval and there's no other way out, for instance. Could Essex Fells or Verona say no? That West Orange can't open one of those two access points to allow people out? I wouldn't imagine there'd ever be a problem letting a fire truck in. I'm wondering specifically about, you know, there's a tree down. It's been a huge, like post Sandy. It's going to be days before it's cleared. And no, we don't want people on our roads. Can they do that?
I'll I'll address that because it is kind of a legal issue. First, otherwise than not being a good neighbor, there is, like I said, there is a recorded agreement and easement document. Which I do not have with me here tonight, but I've reviewed it. We certainly can provide it to the board. That leaves it to the discretion, as with all emergency access, that it leaves it up to the officials. But I will read the recorded document before Mr. Afren objects to my characterization of the document.
Okay.
Objecting, I was just thinking, we just don't have anything in front of us. That's all. Wouldn't say it's an objection, just noting the emptiness on the point, that's all.
I'm impressed with my peripheral vision. It's still good.
See, I think you see where I'm at, which is, you know, I want to be certain that any emergency access is actually two-way emergency access in an emergency. And can't be stopped as a, you know, condition at some point. Thank you.
No, sorry. We're in the middle. Let the let the board.
All the comment period, but as the mayor of Essex Fells, I can answer directly.
Sir.
The question.
Testimony.
Plucker.
Sir. Sir.
No one asked you anything.
Documentation, let the documentation be presented to the board. Then you can address it if you have disagreement with the documentation. Let's see the documentation first. Testimony without documentation.
Before the board that I'm aware of personally, so I can testify to it, I can.
Do you have the documentation with you, sir?
It's a matter of public record, is Mr. Plucker.
Great. Then when we when we see the public record, you can testify to it.
Who's going to put that into the record? It's it's been misstated right here in front of you.
Sir, the documentation is it's objective information, either exists or it doesn't. If it does exist, our board attorney will evaluate it. And then we'll come to a conclusion based on the recorded documentation. And then you can object to it or you can say your piece. But the board doesn't have any documentation to look at. It's like an expert testifying and saying, I didn't give you a report, but I'm going to testify on something you don't have.
Mr. Plucker just testified to a legal matter to you.
He said he's going to provide the document.
He didn't say to you that basically we'll look at the record and look sort out.
He said he's going to provide the documentation.
After he testified to the fact.
I'm not, I, all right, Mayor, if you have any issue with what I said, my phone line is open, my email is open. Tell me what I misstated. For the record, I wasn't reading the document verbatim. I was giving a general characterization. It's a recorded document on file with the Essex County Clerk and we will rely on its terms, as stated.
Is there any objection you have to what he just said?
I'd like, I'd be happy to talk to Mr. Plucker offline, but we're also going to have a conversation in front of this planning board so they understand the facts. Both of, because he's referencing two different things. There's Oval Road, obviously, in West Orange, right? Then from Howell Drive, you know, from Howell Drive to Eagle Rock Avenue. Second section from Howell Drive to the border of Essex Fells, which has a fence in it. Then there's Howell Drive and Essex Fells, the border of Essex Fells to Holt Lane and Essex Fells. There's three sections. The easements governing them are not universal. They're different. So what he's referring to, which I take no issue with, it's not my. Issue is he's talking about easements among private parties in West Orange. In addition, he's not referencing the easement, the only easement that exists in Essex Fells is based in emergency access. He's been for fire and emergency vehicles. So to the. Board members' point, the answer is you cannot have residential traffic go through there without the consent of Essex Fells. Yes, with the with the emergency access, that's the only easement we have as a town. It's not, it's a private road. It's effectively a driveway. So again, it's an important point to understand. I'm talking about the Essex Fells side of West Orange. You guys are talking about something else. It's an important distinction. I don't know, to the witness's point, how that affects RSIS. But absolutely legally clear, and you can confirm it in the written record at the Essex County Register's office. That basically there is no residential access on Oval Road from West Orange into Essex Fells, full stop.
So let's get the documentation and we'll have a board attorney evaluate it. And then we'll have, you can present, he can present, based on the documentation.
And I don't necessarily disagree with Mayor Davis. And we're going to rely on the document itself, and I agree that with you. It is in writing. There may be differing interpretations and I. If I was conflating the portion of Oval Road in West Orange and then the portion that goes into Essex Fells, which is gated off. I I I did not mean to conflate them, but I believe that certain easements do reference both sides. They reference the private agreement with the mayor referred to, but it doesn't make sense for us to hash it out now if nobody can look at the document.
The documentation of one thing, perhaps just a surprise, I can wait for the comment period, but. What the board should be interested in, and I don't know the answer to it, but relevant to the expert's testimony, he's talking about RSIS. It's unclear to me, based on his testimony, whether the fact that if, based on what we see, what I'm saying is true and residents cannot access it. Does it change the analysis of the cul-de-sac?
It it does not.
Second, sir.
Okay, could you say that again? You're done. You're basically saying that in your opinion, based on what you know, that residents can't access that. It's only for emergency vehicles. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
And I just want to make clear.
So we're we're asking that, we're asking the question, you'll provide the documentation and our board attorney will evaluate it. And then we can have a reasonable discussion.
And I just want to make crystal clear for the record that if no resident access is allowed. Through the Essex Fells gate for emergency purposes, if that is strictly prohibited, as the mayor says. Does the proposed project still comply with RSIS?
It does, because it provides the emergency access that RSIS is seeking.
Okay.
At Howell and at Oval.
One, sir, gentlemen, ladies. Okay, so we're going to get the documentation and then we can have a more intelligent discussion. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm Mr. Afren.
Yes, Mr. Penkey, you just said it does permit emergency access at Howell and I couldn't hear the next name. I'm not sure it was transcribed on there.
So so for the project itself, I can, we're RSIS compliant, whether or not we have the Howell Road access. As I testified to, because we have two points of access to Kuzic and Warner. So we're RSIS compliant with and without Howell. With regard to, you know, if you were to consider the existing Highlands against RSIS. Which, as I've indicated, the clarification does not require you to do that. But the use of the emergency vehicles of the emergency access to Essex Fells also. Obeys any characterization as a cul-de-sac. So the same difference, it doesn't have to be open to public traffic.
I was just asking a question. You said there's emergency access at Howell and another road, and I couldn't hear what you said. I'm just asking for the name of the other street. I said Oval. Okay, thank you. That's all I want.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alper. You done? Okay, good.
No questions.
Councilperson Scarpah.
Yeah, just a quick question. Thank you for your testimony.
Councilperson, pull them up.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, given that affordable housing typically. Is built with accessibility to streets and amenities and center of town. You said that the adjacent community has no sidewalks, no connecting sidewalks. And you would want a de minimis exception. What is your rationale for getting that exception?
Uh, we're not asking for an exception for anything offsite. We're not building anything offsite because it's not our our property. So from from that standpoint, we're not looking for any exception for any offsite improvements. With regard to the connections down between the two properties, we have three dry, three sidewalks. So we have adequate sidewalks. There's three routes to connect down to the property line, which connect to the road systems in the adjacent community.
Okay. And I just wanted to understand a little bit about the safety of the slope where the sidewalks are. I think you said the slope can run up to ten percent. I mean, is that a really steep slope? I have no concept of what that is. Is that dangerous for someone in a wheelchair?
So so a handicap ramp. Runs at eight point three percent. We've all seen a handicap ramp. So ten percent is a little steeper than that. But ADA basically says, and it 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 reflects the fact that this country, because ADA is nationwide. Has mountainous areas, have flat areas and so forth. And it reflects that we build sidewalks like this adjacent to roads. So that's why it's considered ADA compatible when you build a sidewalk that parallels and runs. Along a roadway. Whether or not somebody can negotiate it with a wheelchair is really not the the metrics. Where the wheelchair metrics come in is turning spaces at at crosswalk areas. We make sure that there's a flat area where somebody can stop and wait to cross. There's the design of the handicap ramp itself, which is exacting. It has to be at eight point three percent or less. And then there's the the crossing itself. So those elements are where we, they they pay particular attention. But in terms of connectivity along roadways, it can be running slope of the roadways. And then there's there's, and that's not to say everything's ten percent. I mean, if you look at Mr. Anderson's plans, it varies. We've got locations that are flat. We've got crest vertical curves. He's got five percent in some places. He's got flatter. And then obviously, as you get into the parking lots and the buildings themselves, he has accessible routes and 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 traversable areas. So the site has a lot of different features to it.
Right. I was just concerned because it seems like the site is not an easy place for the average person, especially a handicap person, to navigate. And get out to the.
They certainly can get, they certainly can navigate in their day-to-day chores as per ADA requirements. Between parking spaces, between buildings. And I would say there's really nothing here that's stopping the average person. From enjoying the environment that's being created without, as I indicated, one of the things Mr. Anderson chose to do. Was take the second sidewalk on Road D and run it directly between with a flatter slope. So that both a direct connection and something that wasn't running slope, but you know, more flat and enjoyable. So those features are present throughout the site. For the typical people that would live here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson. Mr. Cadoz, do you have any questions from Mr. Penkey on his testimony? No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Cadoz. And Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. I do realize the plans are compliant with ADA requirements due to the roadway slope. But would, I guess, maybe not your office, but the applicant be willing to work with our office? To install additional handicap ramps along some of the sidewalk areas that have higher slope?
I think we indicated at the last meeting that there was some locations along Kuzic between the buildings that we. Were thought would be appropriate. So I think we already committed to that. That was a year ago.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Plucker.
Yeah, I just happen to be looking through my handy dandy litigation bag and I happen to have the easement agreement. That allows, not everything that we've been talking about, but that allows my client to utilize the roads within the. that allows, not everything that we've been talking about, but that allows my client to utilize the roads within the condominium for this particular site, in addition to any portion of Over Road, which may be owned by the condominium association. I do have multiple copies and I'd like to mark it, I guess, as Exhibit A6 if I'm correct. And I do have a must, a copy from Mr. Afron and the entire.
Give a copy to the AMLE, please, and one to Ms. McGovern.
And since I think we're getting a few of these, can you identify it?
Just one.
It's one, well, I will look at Mr. Afron and look at it and then.
Mark this A6? AMLE, this is A6?
A6?
You want to describe what this is, Mr. Placker?
I will, and I'll try, I'll try to be brief. This is an easement agreement made the 14th day of February, Happy Valentine's Day, 1989. It's between West Essex Highlands, Inc. and West Essex Highlands, Inc. I will note for the record that there is, it's between the party of the first part and the party of the second part. And Mr. Afron can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to paraphrase to save us some time. That West Essex Highlands, Inc. own both the property that now comprises the West Essex Highlands condominium, in addition to the property that this application is about here today. I'm going to skip, the, the whereas clauses recognize the ownership interest of West Essex Highlands and both properties. It says the two properties are adjacent to each other. It advises that the party of what is now the condominium wishes to develop its property into a condominium known as West Essex Highlands, a condominium consisting of 300 units, recreation facilities and a detention retention facility, whereas the party in the second part proposes to develop its property in the future. Whereas this agreement shall set forth the respective easements granted by the parties to each other in order to assist each party with the development of its respective property. And I, I'm not going to read every paragraph because we are talking right now just about the road access through the condominium property. Paragraph one says the party of the first part, meaning the current condominium, grants to the party, the second part, its successors and assigns the perpetual right to connect into and use in conjunction with others without any restrictions and conditions, except as may be agreed upon by the parties, their respective successor and assigns, or the roadways, public or private, which are located on the property of the party of the first part, meaning the property that is currently the West Essex Highlands condominium. Okay. Oh, and I should state for the record that even though there's a handwritten note that appears that it's recorded March 3rd, 1983, I think that was somebody's error. If you look, turn it upside down and look at the clerk stamp towards the bottom of the first page of the document, it, it does look like March 3rd, 1989, which would make sense since this was signed on February 14th of 1989.
Can I just ask Mr. Placker a clar.
Mr. Afron, go right ahead.
The party of the first part is, I think you answered this, but I just want to be sure. I realize you're not a witness, but you may know.
I was just referencing a publicly recorded document, which I should state for the record is recorded the Essex County Clerk's office. It's Book 5067, Page 773.
And the West Essex Highlands Plural, Inc. is known as the party of the first part. West Essex Highland Singular, Inc., Singularity, is known as the party of the second part. Now, the West Essex Highland, Inc., Singular, is the entity that's seeking to make this application and afford it what it's a day, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So that company, the second part, is the actual applicant here today.
Bruce, if you're saying there's an S missing, there could be a typo, but if that's, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. My understanding was that the same entity both owned, owned both properties at the time that this agreement was made.
You know, I wasn't suggesting that. I actually thought maybe they were intentionally written differently, they were two separate corporations.
I, I, I don't believe so, no.
So you think it's the same corporation giving itself an easement over one.
100%, there was common ownership at the time.
Thank you. Our position is that it says what it says, what legal meaning it has, whether it's still enforceable or been subverted by any later documents is something we'll, we'll discuss later.
Good, okay, thank you. You go, I'm sorry?
I'll have some questions for Mr. Pinky when convenient.
Mr. Afron.
Thank you. Ms. Pinky, you mentioned that the emergency access roads could be opened, quote, "in an extreme event." All right, that you use the word extreme. What did you mean by an extreme event?
I don't know, we, we, we can all create various scenarios. I've heard a lot of them through 40 years and, but let's say for some reason Oval Road collapsed like Route 80 between Bonnagard and, and Rapplejay and couldn't be open to traffic. That would be an extreme event.
If what happened?
If, if the road collapsed.
Oh, the road collapsed.
Wasn't traversed.
Well, roads don't normally collapse, more likely.
Again, again.
Right, a car crash, for example.
Car crashes is more, you know, short-term potentially, depending upon the severity. I was, you know, the extreme event would be something that closed it for a longer period of time. Shorter period of time, like a car crash, you know, may or may not close the road completely. You might be able to alternate traffic. It, it really depends, there's a lot of different scenarios.
So you don't know at this point to what extent the emergency services in the municipality would regard an incident as extreme so as to mandate opening these access drives, do you?
I think two things before we go get into this rabbit hole. Two things here. First of all, that's up to the Emergency Services Department of West Orange and Essex Fells. You're looking for definition, those people can probably provide the definition. Secondly, I think we need to have the documentation in our hand first to see at what level access is allowed. Once you have that, then you can ask the second question and then we can go to our emergency access people for better definition because we're looking for definitions.
Well, certainly that's fair, Mr. Chairman. I assume Mr. Pinky can return if we need to at some point following that documentation.
I'm sorry?
I assume Mr. Pinky can return if we need him following that documentation.
I think that's a matter, that's a legal matter, not a matter of is the RSIS okay with it? We'll start out with, is it a legal matter? If it, if, if we, if everybody finds that there is another interpretation that's needed, yes, we will ask the applicant. However, at this time, Mr. Placker said he's going to provide all that documentation. So let's see what the documentation says and then we can go from there.
Fair enough, I just, I, I have no problem with that.
Good, thank you.
I have, want to clarify, we've talked a lot about the access roads and not sure anyone has actually put together the actual circulation through and out. So I just want to ask you those questions. Now, if you're in Building D and you, I don't know if you want the circulation plan on or not, but you probably can do this by heart. If you're in Building D and you want to get in your car from that underground lot and go out, what would you do? What roads would you use to get out?
You would basically go down Building D to the roundabout and come down Warner Road.
Okay, so you would go from the roundabout, you wouldn't go to Kuzic, you'd go down the roundabout to Warner Road directly.
The, the most direct route would be down Warner Road directly.
Now, if you were in Building B or A, for example, and wanted to do the same thing, you could do that or you could go the other way down Kuzic down to Warner.
Depends on the decision of this board. We've suggested to the board in accordance with the settlement agreement with the Highlands that we, we concur that it can be emergency gated, which means that everybody would be directed to Warner Road and we're fine with that if it was open to traffic. And certainly if you were in A, B or C, you would make your choice in the morning as to which way you go. And we all make choices in the morning, different routes. My wife and I basically go in the same direction every morning and we both take two different ways to get there. And I'm sure that that's probably true. So sometimes it's sightseeing, sometimes you want to make a right instead of making a left. But that's really immaterial if the board makes the decision to, to do the emergency access. Then everybody's going out Warner.
Okay, so if Kuzic is emergency, then everyone goes out Warner, no matter what building you're in. And if Kuzic was open and you go through Kuzic, it still feeds onto Warner ultimately.
Ultimately, yes.
Right. And then ultimately, the only way out from these complexes from that point is Warner making a left turn onto Oval and out to Eagle Rock.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify, it says one way in and one way out in the ordinary day-to-day.
For the day-to-day activity, correct.
Okay. Just one second. Now, let's just clarify, so it's in one place in the record. Assuming this project were approved, assuming this project were built, what would be the emergency access roads as anticipated right now in the plan?
For the site specifically, the connection at the end of D, Building D, to Howell would be emergency access gated, controlled. And subject to the approval of this board, Kuzic would be emergency access gated and controlled.
And what, what point would Kuzic, I mean, Kuzic seems to on the plan basically connect through and swings around through B, C and A to D. At what point would Kuzic be gated if that were the board's decision?
You'd basically gated it, the driveway to A by the, by the pet play, the animal shelter, animal.
Okay, so right near the animal shelter, right above it, you'd gate it?
You would gate it there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions from Mr. Pankey on his testimony? Please come right up, be identified. You have three minutes, sir.
Hello, Victor Massardi, Mayfair Drive. I have a question, I really don't understand why this is not the whole thing being a cul-de-sac.
You're talking about.
Hello. Okay, so you're saying, wait, could I borrow that site plan that you were referring to? Okay, so I'm just looking at the site plan that Mr. Anderson put together. And my question is this, that the, you know, this whole development goes into Warner Road and then goes into Oval Road and then to Eagle Rock and is that one entrance and exit? So my question is that access, emergency access point that goes into Essex Fells is so, so close to Eagle Rock. I mean, it's not like it's on the far end. It's, it's right there, so it's still, you know, even from the point of the access road, it seems like the whole thing is a cul-de-sac. So my question is to you, I don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, I respect that. And the, the fact is the way RSIS has chosen to establish these standards recognizes and recognizes that emergency vehicle access is required at a certain level. And there was some selectivity in that decision-making. But the fact that we are, that, that an emergency access is provided to Howell, the emergency access exists out to Essex Fells under the standards that have developed, obviate the definition of these sites being a cul-de-sac because there's more than one point of access for the freedom of emergency vehicle movement. That's, it's just the definition that's been chosen in establishing the residential site improvement standards. So with that, as I said, while it's not applicable because in terms of this site, its design, our measurement against RSIS starts at our property line and we clearly have three points of access. We have Kuzic, we have Warner and we have Howell. And RSIS applies to our track. If you were to say for some reason, as Mr. Warner had supposed, that the Highlands project was being built today under RSIS, it also would not be characterized as a cul-de-sac because of the emergency access that exists. So that, that basically is, is how RSIS is established.
Okay, so like you're saying, it doesn't matter if Oval Road and then the access road into Essex Fells are like right next to each other. It doesn't matter, you meet the requirements.
That's correct.
Okay, and then my second question is, you said that if Oval Road where it comes out to Eagle Rock, if it needs a, a traffic signal, it does not need to be interconnected with Laurel Avenue traffic signal?
So let's be clear, there's no if involved. There will be a traffic signal there and there will be intersection improvements there constructed by this developer associated with this project. That is our obligation. Associated with that, the signal will be coordinated with the signal at Laurel. And we've, we've analyzed for that. And in fact, there'll actually be some improvements at Laurel too, because we'll be extending the length of the left turn lane there. So there's a section of widening of Eagle Rock Avenue, there's the traffic signal and the signal will operate as an offset to the traffic signal at Laurel Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, and the public. Have any questions? Please come up and be identified, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Seth Weiss, Letter, Howell Drive. I know we focused a lot on Oval and the other side, but coming back to Howell and that emergency access, were the interconnecting roads to the emergency access evaluated? And could that support emergency vehicles? So we're talking about Howell, not going straight down Howell because that goes into Verona, but Howell cuts over to Slayback and down through Cunningham. So while in agreement or whatever was done with Oval and supporting those roadways, we have a neighborhood here in its current condition. Could emergency, could that road support heavy emergency vehicles over and over again, depending on what that emergency might or might not be?
Absolutely, the existing residential community is designed to accommodate the types of vehicles that may go in there, which include emergency vehicles, you know, as any residential community is. And again, this is a very infrequent scenario.
But, well, correct, but did you evaluate those, those roads in its current condition today and could it support it?
Yes, because the, the community exists, it already has service by emergency vehicles and, and it's just being extended into this site. So there's, they're designed for that. The residential communities, this community is being serviced by the same emergency vehicles that the existing community has been certified.
Correct, but you're talking about a bigger development and a high-rise building now four stories where this is a single-family unit home. So wouldn't you need more additional emergency vehicles to attend to an emergency?
No, I, I mean, emergency vehicle activity on a site like this is a rarity, if it occurs at all. Again, you're not talking about daily activity, you're talking about providing a connection that is there in case the, the, the main route of attack is not available. So the fact is, for the most part, it'll probably never get used.
Fair enough. You mentioned in your testimony tonight that it was going to be a 16-foot paved road or whether other plans to make it more neighborhood-friendly, maybe a permeable grass paper system or a grass creep, as they call it? Or is that going to be a paved road? I'm, I thought I heard different things throughout different testimony, maybe it's my imagination at this point.
Road stabilized to handle the emergency vehicles.
Could, could a grass creep handle emergency vehicles and look a little more friendlier in the neighborhood?
It's, it's been done, but the proposal is for it to be properly designed and stabilized so that it can be maintained correctly over time. So while that is always an option, that is not proposed.
Okay, and my, my last question is, which I don't know, just because you're, you're the, an expert. Does SRIS have standards in terms of the amount of time emergency vehicles need to reach a community? Are there any kind of like time standards that RSIS has for emergency vehicles to reach certain destinations?
There are not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Pankey?
Ms. Pinky, I just want to clarify your view as to whether this is or is not a cul-de-sac, the plan your client is proposing tied into the existing developments. Now, is it your view that as proposed, assuming you get the access roads you want, is this or is this not a cul-de-sac under RSIS?
It is not a cul-de-sac.
Now, in your judgment, what would turn it into a cul-de-sac under RSIS?
For it to be a cul-de-sac, you wouldn't physically construct the Kuzic Road connection and you wouldn't physically construct Howell Road. So if you had only Warner Road coming into the site, then it would be a multifamily cul-de-sac subject to the 1,000 vehicle per day limitation, as I described for Row D.
So in other words, if you don't have the right of the emergency access ultimately. So in other words, if you don't have the right of the emergency access ultimately, then this is a cul-de-sac under RSIS, is that correct?
That's, that's not what's proposed.
I didn't ask what's proposed, I asked a simple question.
But that's not what we have proposed.
Why don't you follow my question, please? Not your question, my question.
Before this board.
Why don't you listen to the question and answer a straight question? If you don't have the right to the emergency access roads that you propose, isn't it true that this project would be a cul-de-sac under RSIS?
I just want to clarify the question, because Mr. Pankey testified to two, two emergency access points, if the board grants the RSIS, exception for Kuzic. Is your question is, if there's, if Kuzic is open and there is no emergency access at Howell, can you clarify, just so we have a clear record, say emergency access, if it wasn't allowed or if it not permitted, can you just be clear which points you were referring to when you ask your question?
With respect, my question was crystal clear. I simply said, if you do not get the emergency access rights that you propose in this current development, would this development be a cul-de-sac under RSIS?
Which roads are you referring to, Bruce?
My question stands, I think the witness has experienced enough to understand what I'm asking.
The answer is not necessarily, because your other alternative, if your only access with Warner Road would be to build Warner Road as a boulevard, which is an RSIS option, which provides the emergency access. It just provides it on the other side of a median island. So you can provide what in effect we're providing with the connection to Kuzic and Howell right at Warner Road, starting at our property line and developing it as a boulevard. So that is an option.
Developing it as a boulevard on what property?
On our property. The characterization starts at our property line.
Why haven't you done that?
The plan is as proposed.
I asked a question, why hasn't it been done to avoid this entire question?
That's a subposition, I don't have an answer.
Why hasn't what been done? Can you just clarify?
My questions are habitually unclear, okay?
Bruce, I did not hear the question. Can you please repeat it as a courtesy?
That is a different issue.
Thank you.
Why haven't you built Warner Road on your segment of this property as a boulevard? And avoid the whole issue?
I can't answer that question. This plan has developed over many years with the input of municipality, various agreements that have been developed. So there's a lot that have gone into the development of this plan that is outside of my involvement.
That's a fair answer. So let me clarify. In your judgment, if you don't have the emergency access roads that you're seeking, you could avoid the RSIS cul-de-sac problem, in your judgment, by making Warner Road a boulevard, is that correct?
That would be an option, yes.
Okay. And if that were not done, and you don't have the emergency access that you're proposing, you are in a cul-de-sac under RSIS, isn't that correct?
If you have a singular point of access, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any member?
Would that include, I'm sorry, would that include if Kuzic was open to traffic?
No, that would be a second point of access.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions from Mr. Pankey on his testimony? Please come up, be identified. You have three minutes.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive. I just have two questions. The first one is you, oh, you said it's not an if, that there will definitely be a traffic light at Oval. My question just was, does this developer, like, does the developer own Oval and Eagle Rock and the land on either side? Because it would seem like it's still an if, unless something's changed that we were unaware of.
The requirement is for the developer to build the signal and the improvements at Oval and Eagle. It's in, it's in the agreements, it's in their intent to do it. It falls within the jurisdiction of Essex County, and it is part of an application, part of an application to Essex County.
Okay, but that yet, as far as you know, that approval hasn't been granted yet, so it's still an if.
It's, it's, it's not an if, because it is a requirement.
For Essex County to?
For this developer to develop this property.
Okay. And then my other question was, you, you keep, you've said a couple times about in the, in the very rare event of an emergency, and the very rare event of an emergency, so then I guess you're, you'd be unaware that twice in two years now, we've had major multiple alarm emergencies up in that very area that has actually closed it down, requiring the emergency access roads to be open. So maybe it isn't such a rare occurrence, like you've stated.
It happens, and I've heard that from many boards. Any member of the public have any questions? Mr. Ephraim, Mr. Ephraim, we're going to have to let the public.
If opening, if using Kuzic as a proper road would also be a way to avoid the RSIS cul-de-sac problem, then why isn't that being proposed as part of this development? Did you know?
Well, it is. Kuzic Road is proposed as part of this development.
Well, if it's an emergency access road, and you don't get, you don't get the right to that, you're suggesting that Kuzic is being proposed as a road?
I'm going to answer.
Mr. Plucker?
Correct, Mr. Chairman and everybody. The site plan that is on file, the site plan for which we are seeking approval, has Kuzic open for regular use of the traffic. We have asked for an RSIS exception at the request of the West Essex Highlands Condominium Association, as reflected in the settlement agreement. As Mr. Pankey testified, and as was recognized at the time we made the agreement, if that exception is granted, great. If not, our development works both ways for traffic purposes, as per Mr. Pankey's testimony. It is at the, to this board, whether to grant it, does it affect the overall site plan, the development of the project, whether it is granted or not? No.
I would like to clarify one. Mr. Pankey? While we filed for the agreement for an exception, this board does not really need to process it as an exception. You have the right as a planning body to control the access. RSIS does not control the form, and I think the example I gave when I testified last is there's this board and this applicant could have proposed to make it a gated community with car access for residents and for emergency vehicles and a calling button. So putting a gate across Kuzic really does not rise to the need for a diminished protection. We have filed for it, but the board can just make a finding of fact that they can, that they agree. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Is there a right of the developer to actually open Kuzic as a road and access the condos?
Looking at the ordinance.
I'm not asking about the ordinance, I'm asking about the, the question of.
Twenty-five dash nineteen, Section E, Bulk Regulations Number Five, Unrestricted Site Access. Ingress and Egress shall be permitted from Warner Drive and Kuzic Drive.
No, I'm not asking that, I understand. What, what in the settlement agreement was Mr. Plucker referring to?
Okay.
When he's referring to the, the granting of, trying to grant the request of the development.
And thank you for the clarification, and I have a clarification for you in connection with your question. But I was referring to the settlement agreement in that we will seek Kuzic to be open, which is what the site plan, to normal traffic, which is what is proposed on the site plan. I was referring to the settlement agreement, our obligation vis a vis the condominium association to seek the closure of Kuzic to norm, regular traffic, and to have it available for emergency access only.
So you're saying you're obligated not to have an open road at Kuzic?
No, that's not.
That's not what I said.
Well, you're obligated to seek the closure, you said.
But if the board doesn't grant it, then Kuzic is open, which is what the site plan proposes.
So your position then is, if Kuzic is open, you have no cul-de-sac under RSIS?
That's Mr. Pankey's area.
Under either condition, whether it's open or closed, it is a point of access for emergency vehicles regardless.
So in other words, that's the basis by which you say it's not regulated by RSIS?
That's correct. It is regulated by RSIS.
No, I don't mean that, I mean as a cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I thought this was important to clarify. I don't know if I agree, but I thought we never had a clear statement of these issues.
We're clearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Mr. Pankey, please come up, be identified. You have three minutes.
Gilde Paul, Howell Drive. So at an earlier meeting, I asked the question about what emergency access meant to Howell Drive. And did it mean, you know, ambulance and fire trucks only? Or did it mean the 800 or 900 cars that are coming out of that development going, you know, past my house? And I was told, I thought by one of the board members, but I could be wrong, that that had not been determined and would be determined at a later date, and was somehow under the impression, and this could be on me, that there would be discussion in open forum about it before that was determined. So my question is, when was this decided?
About Kuzic?
About, no, about Howell Drive and the, and it being open to traffic.
It's in the ordinance that was adopted in 2020.
It, it's open to emergency vehicles.
Right, no, emergency vehicles, I understood, but he's talking about using it as an access road if needed for the development, which is the eight or 900 cars going past my house, not emergency vehicles.
The, the ordinance allows Kuzic Road to be.
I, I don't know anything about Kuzic Road. I live on Howell.
Okay, Howell Drive, it's also in the ordinance as an option for an emergency entrance.
I understand that.
And that was adopted in 2020.
I asked what emergency entrance meant. That was my question, and I was told that that had not been determined. So somewhere between then and now, I guess it was determined, and I'm just curious what happened.
We have, ma'am, we haven't got there. We haven't heard testimony to that. We're talking about this as an emergency, the testimony was, correct me if I'm wrong, fire, ambulance.
Am I wrong? Is that, I'm sorry, let's ask Kim.
It's, it's available for emergency services, which generally means fire, ambulance, police. But it is an emergency access, and if there's something that occurs that determination of the emergency services needs to use it for emergency purposes, that includes some other evacuation route, they have that option. Will that happen? I, I don't know. It certainly is not something you're, you're going to see on a, on, it would have to be something extreme.
So if a tree falls, if a tree falls along Oval, like it did before?
It, it would not necessarily be that, that type of an event.
Wait, is that a yes or a no?
I, I mean, a tree can be cleared within an hour or two hours, so no, I would say. I, I would say the type of event that would entreaty the emergency services, which would be an involvement of the decision of the, of the administration, would, would only result if there was some closure of the route for an extended period of time, be in days, not a period of hours.
So is that just, I just want to make sure, is that the final word, or was what I?
Final word is up to the emergency services of the township of West Orange.
So the impression I got last time, I guess.
It's not going to be for regular traffic. It is, in the case of a catastrophic event, and they would have to define what that means. We're talking about definitions, so I leave that to the emergency services, folks. Police, fire, and ambulance in the township of West Orange.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please come up and be identified. And you have three minutes.
Piotenski, the Grand West Orange. So you're probably not aware, but there is repair going on on Oval Road as we speak due to a gas leak that's occurring. It's just at the juncture of where Oval meets Kinsel. So the point of the question is, should you have an event that closes off Oval close to Eagle Rock Avenue? What is your proposed access for the residents of the Highlands and the Grand and this new development to exit, to get to the center of town, to get out of our developments?
There is no specific proposal, other than that situation being properly managed, a repair situation of such, of such nature. And the residents will have the ability to have emergency vehicles get to the site based upon the emergency access that's provided. You know, traffic is maintained in those events in various ways. It depends on what it is, it depends on where it is in the road. There are ways in a 40-foot cartway to keep roadways open to traffic.
But the hypothetical is, it is closed for hours, and let's say there happens to be a fire in one of those apartment buildings on the proposed development.
Under that hypothetical, the, the community may be inconvenienced for that period of time. It's possible.
And trapped is the word, right? Not inconvenience, but more like trapped. So let's say you have an emergency.
You could use that word, yeah?
Yes, you've got a child who's having an asthma attack, who cannot get to the authorities, get to the hospital.
I'm sorry.
That's what I'm trying to ask a question.
So, so emergency services still have access if there's an emergency event requiring the attendant of emergency services through the various emergency service routes. But the normal day-to-day traffic might be interrupted for a period of, of time, which would be an inconvenience to the existing residents and future community. That's, that, that can happen, yeah. I can't say, I can't say it won't happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public have any other questions from Mr. Pankey on his testimony? Please come up and be identified. You have three minutes.
Maria De Palma, 67, Lappas Circle. I have a question. Back some months ago, April, I believe it was, there was a fire on the golf course, and a tree fell over and landed on Oval. I have a mother that lives in West Caldwell, fairly close, 12 minutes, and she had chest pains. And I could not get out. They would not let me walk out either way, Essex Fells or on Oval. I was trapped in my own house. The neighbors at my mom's house were not home. So what happens in a case like that? I mean, the fire was on the golf course, the fire engines were on the golf course. There was a fire engine down by Warner and the road continuing on to go into Essex Fells, and they wouldn't even let me out by foot. So what happens? Things happened. It was, you know.
That's right. And this project, this project is not going to change that condition, with the exception of, it does provide another point of emergency vehicle access to the Hill, to the Highlands, but it does not change that existing condition.
And by the time they came and opened the road, people that were coming home had to walk from Essex Fells. My neighbor, who's 86 years old, was all out of breath, and I stopped to walk her home, because that's the only way she could get home. She had to leave her car in Essex Fells to walk home. So we were trapped in and trapped out.
This project is not changing that condition.
Okay, well, that's not really safe at all.
Thank you very much. Any member of the public have any questions from Mr. Pankey on his testimony? Please come up and be identified. You have three minutes.
Debbie Drews? Hi, Deborah Drews. I live on Barbara Avenue. In, in the study, the first one that was presented, there are about 500 to 800 cars that would be part of this plan. In a normal daily situation, how is this access road going to impact on Eagle Rock? In just a daily situation of people leaving and coming and going to go to school and coming back and forth?
Okay. I, I would just object to the subject matter of the question. The question does ask about off-site traffic conditions, which the board cannot use to assess or evaluate this application. Zone, I should add. That permits this density.
But this is a very important question, because we're dealing with a lot of traffic coming in and out between Laurel and Eagle Rock and going down to Pleasant Valley Way.
Thank you, testified to the, the level of service at the intersection. So when it becomes signalized, I will let, I'll admit the question, please. Yeah, so, so certainly, as I've indicated in my prior testimony and tonight, the improvement that we are constructing at Oval and Eagle Rock will benefit the existing community, as well as handle the additional traffic from the new community. In fact, it'll be a substantive improvement, both operationally and safety-wise, that will accrue to the benefit of our residents, as well as the existing residents. There will also be improvements at Laurel associated with it. So overall, access to Oval Road and traffic flow entry and exit onto Eagle Rock Avenue is going to be significantly improved.
So the thing is that, as a spectator here, I don't have a map, and there are no visual cues to understand what's being said. So I would like to know why in presentations like this, which are so important, that those kinds of visual aids are not presented to the public or even to be able to seen to understand, because this is by word of mouth, but there's no way of exactly knowing that, how it's going to be implemented.
It, it'll basically look like a traffic signal that you see every day at intersections, at Oval Road and, and Eagle Rock Avenue. So there's really no way to depict it. We just usually put a circle on a plan and say traffic signal. Except for the design plans that we do in detail for the county.
But we're talking about a number of people that are even more than the number of people that go down Pleasant Valley Way or go down to Eagle Rock daily here in West Orange. So there's a very big change that's being occurred, and I feel as though you need to be responsible for it, and it needs to be really clearly explained, not just with hypothetical things.
It's not hypothetical, and it's designed to the standards of the county. It's under their jurisdiction, and it'll be reviewed in detail by their engineers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any other members of the public have any questions from Mr. Pankey on his testimony? Please come up, be identified, you have three minutes.
Maria De Palma, sixty-seven, Lappas Circle. I have a question. Right now, with all the construction on Eagle Rock Avenue, which could be at any given time, anything can happen where they need replace a water line, a gas line, the detours are horrendous right now, when we get out of here, it'll take me half an hour to get home. In the morning, when I leave to bring my daughter to school, there already is a backup to get out of my complex, so I'm waiting at least maybe seven cars. The unit that you're proposing in the back is going to have dozens of other cars, how quick can those lights turn that will be sitting there? Maybe twenty minutes to get out. How, how, how can that, the congestion is already there. The towns are overpopulated with cars from the past three years, there's been a sudden change in our towns.
Let him answer the question, ma'am.
The next town, so how?
Let him answer the question.
A light, how, how many lights do we have to wait to get out? There's a lot of cars.
Let him answer the question.
I, I'm asking, how many, how many lights? I mean, I'm taking seven cars to get out.
Ma'am, you have to let him speak.
Oh, I thought you said?
Okay, good, right ahead, sir.
So, so as I indicated, this intersection will operate at excellent levels of service. What that basically means is, when you arrive at the signal, you'll be processed when the light turns green, very little queue, very little delay, much different experience than the stop sign offers today. It, it's, there's a, there's a big difference between a stop-controlled intersection and a signal-controlled intersection, so the ability to move out of Oval Road and out of these neighborhoods in the future will be safer, and it'll be way more efficient than occurs today, and it eliminates the, the issues you have today with sightlines looking through the foliage that isn't properly maintained, all of that goes away with the traffic signal control.
I understand what you're saying about the traffic signals, but you're having hundreds of cars go out, and it's at the seven to nine hour, that's when everybody wants to leave. How many lights? I mean, I don't know how long a signal is, but you're not going to get out in two or three or four, it might be five, six, or seven, because when I get to the bottom of Eagle Rock right now, I, three cars can go through and the light's red, and go try it.
What light?
Eagle Rock in Pleasant Valley Way, three cars get out and the light's red again, so I'm already backed up, twelve cars, and it takes me at that time to get out three, four lights. That's just in my community, but with the congestion from that community, even though there might be a few other access roads, there's, there's, it's so little space for so many cars to get out, and we're already feeling the impact of the congestion of all the people moving in. Now, it's been for the past two or three years, there's nowhere to move or go, we're like trapped, it's, it's congested already, I can't imagine what eight hundred units, or four hundred units and eight hundred, twelve bunch of cars might do.
Thank you very much.
That's what I want to say.
Thank you very much. Do any member of the public have any questions? Mr. Pankey? Mr. Afron?
Mr. Pankey, I was asked to ask, inquire on one subject, are you directly with others in, in connection with your client, in communication with any municipal or other governmental officials concerning parking changes on Oval Road?
I don't understand the question.
Well, are you in connection, contact with any municipal or governmental officials, or are you aware of anyone on the developer's team that is in connection with issues concerning the potential for parking on Oval Road?
I am not.
Okay, so you have no knowledge of whether there's any contemplation of adding parking to Oval Road?
I am not aware.
Okay, thank you, I know other questions.
Thank you.
With respect to Ms., statement Ms. McGovern made, I just want to reserve an issue of law for the objector, that although we know the L H one ordinance?
I H?
L H ordinance.
I H.
I H. Allows an access road drive from Building D towards Howell. It's our legal position, as we've mentioned earlier and will address later, and I simply want to reserve the issue, that there is no corresponding use permitted in the adjoining R three zone, and this access road would have to cross or go between two lots in the R three. No variance has been requested, and it's our position that though the I H may allow an access road on the I H zone from Building D, there is no corresponding usage in the R three. And so I wanted to just respond to what Ms. McGovern said in quoting the ordinance to one member of the public, that it's our position, there is no right to continue an access road in the R three at this stage.
Mr. Plucker? Is this?
In the ordinance, and nobody objected to the ordinance, that, that passed.
Excuse me, that's got nothing to do with it. The I, excuse me, Ms. McGovern, the I H ordinance allows an access drive on the property in the I H zone.
It describes it by lot and block, it specifically describes it by lot and block.
Describe all at once, you can't amend the R three by passing elements in the I H. There was no amendment to the R three at all, no notice was given that R three is being amended, and R three has never been amended to allow an access road to a multifamily development in the R three zone.
I'm just going to disagree with you, and we'll agree to disagree.
Fair enough, I'm simply preserving the issue, I didn't want my silence to buy.
It's Plucker.
Just for the record, the applicant does disagree with Mr. Afron's legal conclusion that emergency access is a use, so we're also, we'll reserve it for another day, maybe another forum, but I just wanted to state that for the record, and, and just to note, the two emergency access lots were in which the council allowed use in the I H one zoning ordinance, those two lots, the applicant provided jurisdictional notice, two hundred-foot notice from those two lots in addition to the subject property, putting anyone within two hundred feet of the two lots for proposed emergency access to Howell on notice. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Well, B, that notice, if this were to be in the R three, and that's the point. When you give a notice that says, oh, an access drive in the I H, that's not notice to people that the R three is being changed.
Mr. Afron, we, we're going to take everything under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Thank you, by the way, for releasing Mr. Hudesco.
No problem, I understand, thank you, and thank you to Mr. Plucker for understanding.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to close this portion of the meeting, and the next regular meeting of the planning board will be held Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M. in council chambers, and the special meeting will be held October twenty-ninth. This, this application is carried to October twenty-second with no additional notice to be required.
No, I, I just, I didn't mean to interrupt the chairman, I thought there might have been a special, a regular meeting.
You're the regular.
Regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting, I wasn't aware.
So we're hearing this on October twenty-two?
Yeah.
Be sure to me, I just wanted to make sure.
Your, your person speaks first.
I'm sorry?
Your expert speaks first.
Great, thank you, we appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, good.
You interrupted.
Okay, and then, October twenty-ninth is also a special meeting to be held here in council chambers at six thirty P M. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? The ayes are above the nose. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.